Adequate notice of this meeting of the zoning board of adjustment was sent by email to the Asbury Park Press and the CoStar our official newspapers on January 4, 2021, and was posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building. And take roll call. Mr. Capoli?
Here.
Mr. Fitzgerald? He is here.
Here, here. I was on mute. I'm sorry. It took me a minute.
Mr. Malango?
Here.
Ms. Deeds?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Here.
Mr. Lisco?
Here.
Mr. Palmizzano?
Here.
And Ms. Drazenovich?
Here.
And Mr. Greg and Mr. Drew are absent.
All right. All right. Welcome to the January 28, 2021 Board of Adjustments Meeting. Will you please join the board in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and just, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for the flag. All right. Next up is our Oaths of Office. We have quite a few being sworn in or renewed this evening.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, can I just do one quick thing before we begin, just procedurally? For the Open Public Meetings Act notice, we're going to say that this meeting was lawfully convened and lawfully advertised in two official newspapers in April. In addition, we did the Asbury Park Press and the CoStar.
Correct.
And in conjunction with that, we also importantly in this coronavirus pandemic world in which we live, we have to announce that the login information was also printed and advertised, and also the notices were placed on the bulletin board and also the doors of Borough Hall in a way that you could see it from the outside.
Yep, and our website.
And the website. So it's a lawfully convened meeting. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Did you want to swear in the new members and existing members?
What I would suggest, if it's okay to all the board members, and first of all, Happy New Year to all of you and congratulations to all of you. And what we typically do is we'd swear everyone in at once. Although when we say aye, state your name, I'll just go one by one and you can state your name and then we can all recite it together. So I guess we have from the agenda, John Lisco, Charles Ross, Tom Palmizzano, Holly Dietz, Anne Marie Drazenovich, and Michael Drews all being sworn. So if you could all raise your right hands and say aye, and John Lisco, you said first.
Aye, John Lisco.
Mr. Ross?
Aye, Charles Ross.
Mr. Palmizzano?
Aye, Tom Palmizzano.
Holly?
Aye, Holly Dietz.
Anne Marie?
Anne Marie. Aye, Anne Marie Drazenovich.
And is Michael Drews on the line?
He is not.
Okay. So now we can all continue. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
And I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear.
And that I will bear.
True faith.
True faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
The same.
And to the governments.
And to the government.
Established.
Established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of a member.
Of a member.
Of the Belmar Zoning Board of Adjustment.
Of the Belmar Zoning Board of Adjustment.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations to you all. And I think April has something for you all to sign. She'll get that to you somehow and congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. I thought I had a pretty good workout routine until I had to hold my arm up for two minutes and my shoulder getting sweared. All right. Next up, we have the nominations for Chair and Vice Chair. We'll start with Chair. Can I have a nomination for the Chair?
I'll nominate John Lisco.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Hutchinson. I happily.
I'll second the nomination for John.
Well, thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Any other nominations?
I nominate Mark Fitzgerald, the Vice Chair.
Thank you. And I will second that nomination for Mark Fitzgerald, the Vice Chair. Are there any other nominations for Chair or Vice Chair? All right, I see none. April, do you?
Do. So we have John Lisco for Chairman. Do we have an all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And then we have Mark Fitzgerald for Vice Chair. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone?
Thanks, everybody. All right. The workshop discussion on the annual report. Well, Kevin, did we need to go over anything on that?
I would defer to April. April, is there anything we need to?
You have anything you want me to add to it before I send it to the council?
Maybe, maybe real quick, Mr. Kennedy, or maybe you can weigh in on this. We kind of talked about it earlier this week. I would like to just put a, maybe a theme of moving forward when we have applicants who can't hear their entire application in one hearing, that if they're bumped, they're bumped at least two meetings out, or they would have to renotice if they can't come in front of us in that time. As a board, we're plenty busy and I don't want to keep burning spots in the agenda because an applicant isn't ready.
I think, I think that if the board's okay with that, I think it's a really good idea and it's something that if you want, we can put our, amend our bylaws and April and I can put something together for official adoption if that's acceptable and we can just sort of, I think, I think, you know, we've had this year a lot where we've had some agendas disturbed, so to speak. And what happens is for particularly new members, if we have three people on the agenda and then two back out, there's a whole slew of other people who are waiting and don't get to be heard. And sometimes it's, it's some last minute unforeseen circumstance, which, you know, we always deal with, but sometimes it, it's, it's not that. So I think, Mr. Chairman, if you want, April and I can put a bylaw amendment together and, and present that at the next meeting. I think it's a good idea that the board is so inclined.
Anybody have any objections to that?
No, I think it's an excellent idea.
All right. Thank you. That was all I had for the annual report. Other than that, that's not really the annual report, but I thought the annual report was pretty good and didn't miss anything.
And, Mr. Chairman, just for longtime members and newer members, the annual report is something by law that we are required to adopt and it, the law does not say, it's got to say A or B or C, but basically it's just a summation of what we did and also it is an opportunity for us, if we want, to say things to the borough like, hey, maybe you should consider changing this ordinance because we're seeing a lot of issues with this, or maybe consider this. And the fortunate thing is we have such a great relationship with our mayor and council and administration. We don't have to wait just for an annual report to say we have an idea. And if something's important, we usually just communicate it right away. But that's the opportunity that if there is anything particular along the year that comes up that we say, hey, put this in, this is a weird thing and we need some clarification and guidance on that. So April, I can't remember if we had any specific things that we needed to include. But again, even if we don't do it tonight, we can do that anytime.
I, Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Of course.
I, I just, it's a thought and I think we should talk it through. And if not tonight, then, you know, we could defer to a different time. But you know, I believe that Ted is often required to, to fail a permit, you know, based on things requiring a variance and at times they're extremely de minimis, right? And I'm wondering if we couldn't, for the purpose of trying to help our residents and streamline the process more, if it wouldn't be something where Ted could come and, and say, you know, listen, you know, this is triggering something here, but I don't feel like we need to go through a full application. Like, there may be some minor items that don't require this lead time and the cost. And I'm, you know, I think Ted would be in a better position to say, but I'm basically suggesting that Ted have a little more authority to make some decisions or bring some decisions in front of the board without necessarily having to generate the full application process. And I think Ted would be in a better spot to say when that might apply versus me. But, you know, Ted, you kind of get an idea what, where I'm coming from, right? Some of the things that you know are going to be approved, but
Just if I could interrupt, that's item three on the, on the report, so, of suggested items.
Oh, I apologize.
It's already there. Yeah. Yeah. I think you brought that up early in the year and it was captured.
Okay. I'm sorry. I didn't see it. Ted, would you have an opinion for the, you know, kinds of things that you feel should be within your authority and don't need to come in front of the board? So some of the newer members could, could understand what points trying to be made here?
I mean, I think lot coverage issues, if you're less than a 1% or less, you know, I mean, I would have to bring it in front of the board for a 1% issue or building coverage issue, you know, with 1%. You know, you get into that area where if it's over even a half a percent, you know, it's, I really don't have the authority to.
Yeah, and it's, it's what would be called de minimis. There's de minimis, de minimis things that are triggering variances and the whole processing cost and time that we're likely going to approve anyway. So there's one of two things. Either we give Ted more authority to make those decisions out in the field and just bring it to the board and advise us, right? We, we would still vote on it. So we wouldn't be short circuiting anything here as, as one alternative. Or, or alternatively, have Ted opine for us to modify those minor coverage variances and maybe, you know, you up the lot coverage by 5% or building coverage by 5% as, as our new standard. If in fact, it's so minimal that it, you know, we, we shouldn't be bothering the resident about it.
Another suggestion, maybe you have a three main committee that just reviews some of this stuff. I'll bring it to April and she can notify them what it is. They can make a decision or I can bring it to the court.
We have something like that with the.
With the what?
With the planning board.
Yeah, that would be great, April. If we could, if we could copy something that they're doing there, that would give us like, like a little bit of precedent. And then, you know, maybe we could, you know, and then that could be positioned as we're really trying to help the residents out here and not make this process so difficult for them.
And there's probably going to be some legal issues associated with that. So April, you and I, or, you know, can speak to the Borough Attorney about it. Absolutely.
Sure.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I noticed the, the first part talked about the pending litigation. This might not be the forum for this, but did the 10th Avon drop off? Because I thought that was still pending or was there a decision on that one? The?
No. That's still going on and I, I think we might have an executive session tonight and we can talk about that, but that case is, is still pending.
I didn't see that listed. I saw all the others, so.
On there.
It's up to you. I just didn't know if it was settled yet, so.
Well, so just so everybody knows, don't hang up after the meeting. We conclude the zoning board meeting. We are going to go into executive session right after this meeting. All right. Any other questions or updates for the annual report? All right. I see none. Can I have a motion to waive the reading and approve the, the minutes for the December 17, 2020 meeting?
So, so moved.
Thank you, Mr. Malango.
I'll second.
And thank you, Mr. Hutchinson.
Okay, Mr. Capoli?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Approve.
Mr. Malango?
Yes.
Ms. Deeds?
Yeah, I'm you.
I'm abstaining.
Yes.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mr. Lisco?
Yes. All right. Can I have a motion to waive the reading and appoint the Board Secretary, April Claudia?
Make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Capoli.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Malango.
Okay, Mr. Capoli?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Malango?
Yes.
Ms. Deeds?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mr. Lisco?
Yes. Congratulations. All right. Can I have a motion to waive the reading and, uh, waive the reading and approve the resolution to appoint the Board Attorney, Mr. Kevin Kennedy?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Malango, and a second from Mr. Ross.
Okay. Mr. Capoli?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Malango?
Yes.
Ms. Deeds?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
And Mr. Lisco?
Yes.
I do have to say, I, I miss Manny's commentary at this time.
I was just about to say the same thing. And I'll ask you about your rates later, Kevin.
And, 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 and we also miss Manny's candy. But, but in all seriousness, thank you very much for, for the appointment. I've been fortunate to have been the attorney for a number of years and I still am very appreciative of it and still very excited about it and, and I look forward to working with you over the next year. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up is the resolution establishing a remote meeting protocol. Do we need to discuss that, Mr. Kennedy, or?
Sure. And can I just ask one quick, April, do we need to do newspapers and meeting days or did we do that last year? I mean, at the end?
We did that already.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, just, just real briefly and, and for the new members, I'm sorry, all this is being thrown at you, but you've come on the board in a, in a really unique and exciting and challenging time with the coronavirus and the pandemic and the restrictions have really changed the way that we operate. And when this whole thing started in, in March, there was a whole bunch of legitimate comments and questions as to whether or not we were allowed to have these computer type of meetings and whether or not they were lawful and, and a lot of people said, I'm going to challenge them, you know, you know, you know. And so we sat for a while and now it's, it's very common, very, 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 very much, very common. But there are unique issues about how people notice, how people get to come and see the applications. Because in the old days, people would just go down to April's office and have an opportunity to review the application and review the plans. And they would have an opportunity to come to the meeting and, and challenge things. And so now that there's no meetings, now that Borough, some of the Borough Halls are closed for limited access, there is a whole bunch of, of things. And you heard at the beginning, we now make the applicants notice and they notice the advertise, I mean, the login information. So that really has changed the way that we operate. And as an aside, Mr. Chairman, just so you know, because I think during the whole pandemic, I kept saying, oh, I wish the law, the legislature would just adopt the law that says these computer remote meetings are lawful. Then we would never have to worry about, you know, the historic laws that were, Anne Marie and Holly, the, the Open Public Meetings Act laws were created well before, you know, we had this pandemic. So anyway, I just read that there is an assemblyman who has sponsored a bill to basically say these computer meetings are lawful and allowed and no one's allowed to challenge on the basis of having, you know, an approval or denial was granted through a remote meeting setting as long as the board undertook good faith measures to, you know, present the login information. So that's at least what the law is on its initial level being proposed. How it goes through the state legislature and if it ever gets adopted and how it gets adopted is sort of a crazy and fascinating thing in itself. But just be on the mind, the, the, on the lookout that there is apparently legislation pending, which I think would be a very good thing from, from our standpoint. Anyway, to make a long story short, with all these regulations and all these executive orders that came out, they came out a couple of different rules about how we have to change and how we have to operate in this pandemic world. And some of them came out through executive orders, some of them came out through legislative orders, some of them came out through opinions from the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, which has the opinion, I mean, the force of law. Some came out through recommendations and orders from the Division, New Jersey Division of the Local Finance Board, which has the force of law behind it. And still others came out from the recommendations from the New Jersey Planning Officials, which doesn't have the force of law, but those are the people who are in this industry and they, you know, came out with some really good ideas. So fortunately or unfortunately, all those different set of rules and regulations didn't really jive. So, and they're, they're all subject to change. So basically, one of the suggestions is that we have a remote meeting policy, which is just basically going to be our rules and regulations, our, our bylaws as to how we operate this remote meetings. And it's, it's fairly simple and straightforward, you know, just saying we have to notice and we have to, the applicants, when they notice, they have to advertise the, the login information and the plans have to be sent to April in email format and PDF format so that instead of, you know, anyone can come and, and just go into the Borough's website and have an opportunity to look at these applications and plans. And the law does say a couple of specific things. It said, we have to explain that April has a mute button where she can just put people on, on mute, which, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm learning is a very, 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 very important button. And April asked if she could take it home and take it to the office, but she can't, you know, it's just for purposes of this meeting. But we have to explain that before we put someone on mute, we have to put him or her on notice. And it says, try to rationalize with the person and, you know, try to get them to calm down and things like that. Again, just new board members, I, I can't think of any more than once we've ever had to use it in the last, you know, couple of, you know, years. But, Mr. Chairman, in the good old days, when we were meeting live, you would have, you and Mr. Fitzgerald would have the gavel where you could rule someone out of order. So this is the way of ruling someone out of order in the, in the virtual world. And the, you know, it just says other basic things like we try to be, be mindful of the fact that everything you say is being recorded and be mindful to try to not to have, you know, anything within constitutional and norms, not have anything, you know, offensive, you know, things in, in, in sight. And the only real thing that I wanted to talk about, and I already went longer than I wanted to, I wanted to, I apologize. The only one thing that I really wanted to focus on is the issue of accepting written comments and that some of the recommendations and directives from the Local Finance Board and the DCA suggested that because of the pandemic and people aren't going to be coming to these meetings or don't want to go to these meetings, you have to take written comments. And, and Holly and Anne Marie, just, you know, historically, that has been a no-no in terms of the zoning board because you know, you can't just submit a petition or you just can't submit a letter saying, I don't like this project or I like this project. We need people to come to the meetings or at least participate and say, I don't like this. And that, you know, you all as board members could say, well, would you like it better if, if this, if we, there was a tree planted here or if this driveway were moved over five feet to the right or if the house was set back? So it basically, the right to cross-examine witnesses. And so that's an important part. So that's some of the things that got really confusing because there were differences between what the state officials were saying. And then the New Jersey Planning Officials came out with a, you know, basically a recommendation that said, hey, if you're a Borough Council, you should accept those written comments. If you're a school board, you should accept those written comments. But we as a zoning board is a quasi judicial agency that has to really act like we're judges in a courtroom that, you know, that shouldn't be allowed in, in this scenario because of all those things that we just talked about. So the way that I wrote this, which is not, you know, certainly not, not perfect and subject to change is that, given that, you know, variety of, of issues and it's just going to be, if, if it's adopted, that our policy is in the absence of a law to the contrary or a case law to the contrary or the direction, we're not accepting written comments. But, you know, certainly that's something that, that's in, you know, up, up in the air. And then the only other final thing that I just, because I just had a, a sort of a rough experience last night in another town, we had a Zoom meeting and there was a, basically someone crashed into the system and put some, you know, inappropriate comments and pictures and, and took over the meeting. And so ultimately the meeting had to be canceled. So we probably, you know, April will work out a way and she, she knows it, that, you know, how to hit a, you know, a drop all button and, and all those things. But, you know, just again, stuff that we never thought about two or three years ago because we didn't have to and stuff we will think of it now. So anyway, Mr. Chairman, that's just our general rules and regulations on that. Whether we adopt it tonight, you know, doesn't matter. We can do it next meeting. It's just, but that's something to think about that we're supposed to have some type of meeting protocol. And of course, like everything, it's subject to change. Once we go through things and we learn how things can be better, we modify it.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. All right. Can I have a motion to waive the reading and approve the resolution established the remote meeting protocol?
And make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I think I saw Mr. Fitzgerald and then Mr. Capoli.
Okay, Mr. Capoli?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Malango?
Yes.
Ms. Deeds?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mr. Lisco?
Yes, thank you. All right. Now, next up is the resolution to, a motion to approve the, waive the reading and approve the resolution for the application of Thomas Pimponelli at 314 14th Avenue.
And, Mr. Chairman, real briefly, that was a, an approval at the last meeting. So I would respectfully suggest that our, our new board members would not vote on this resolution since it occurred. But this was for the demolition of an existing single family structure and the reconstruction of a single family home. They needed variances and the conditions of note included. They were going to, remember, confirm that the driveway width shall be reduced to 10 inches so as to allow additional sufficient parking at the site. And the confirmation that the gas meter will be relocated to a zoning compliant location approved by the zoning officer. Confirmation that the existing balusters in the driveway would be removed. And confirmation that the walls would be fire rated in accordance with UCC regulations and that the grading and drainage details be reviewed and approved by the Borough Engineer. And then the other standard was they attempt in good faith to put the utilities underground and, and report back to April in, in six months or so, just as to the results of that. And, Mr. Chairman, if that's acceptable, that, that resolution can be adopted.
All right. Can I have a motion to waive the, waive the reading and approve the resolution as discussed by the Kennedy?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Malango. A second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Okay, Mr. Capoli?
Abstain.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Malango?
Yes.
Ms. Deeds?
Stay.
Mr. Ross?
Stand.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mr. Lisco?
Stay. All right. All right. We had three applications on the agenda. The first one up, I guess we're not going to hear, is for Roseanne Whedon at 315 12th Avenue.
Yes, I spoke to Roseanne Whedon. If you recall, she was having dispute with her neighbor and her attorney and the neighbor's attorney are still trying to work on an agreement before they, she comes before the board. She has agreed to carry her application to the March 25th meeting without any more renoticing.
Okay. All right. So do we need a motion then to carry that to March?
Yes.
All right. Can I have a motion to carry Roseanne Whedon's application to the March meeting without the need to further renotice?
Make that.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
And then just for the record, that's going to be a remote meeting. So if anyone was interested, look at the website for the login instructions.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Next up was our second application for New York S M S A Limited Partnership doing business as Verizon Wireless at 1715 Ocean Avenue.
I have the attorney here for that application.
Oh, great.
In case you. Kevin, did you want to explain or do you want him to explain?
Sure. As I understand it, well, you'll recall that this is a pending application and we had carried it because there was, we all found out. Hello, Mr. Delugry?
Oh, good evening. For the record, this is Rick Delugry.
Thanks. And so anyway, we had found out that the, the Verizon is potential in potential negotiations with the Borough relative to some uh, Verizon is potential in potential negotiations with the borough relative to uh, some uh, uh, installations that may or may not affect uh, the information and, and application here. So we're just getting more information and uh, I had spoken with the administrator. And we'd asked, uh, for a certain report and uh, Mr. DeLucre was good enough to give us a report. And I think, uh, Rich, we're just going to carry this a little bit and so that we can, uh, you can work out, uh, let the borough process unfold and then come back to us. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, that's what we've requested. Um, the only open discussion point was how far we could carry it. And it was a choice between March and April. And frankly, April causes real problems for us because if we came back for the board in April, even if we're approved, uh, the turnaround time then to get the resolution and to get our building permits and actually build it takes us into the middle of the summer, which you know, obviously won't work for that site.
Okay. April, is there um, any issues on, on your side about putting them on for March or?
No.
Okay. And I, I guess some of it also, Rich, we'll put it, I mean, Mr. Chairman, if, if you win the board, okay, we'll put it on for March, but I guess uh, Rich, some of it might be subject to change depending on what that transpires between uh, your client and the borough, I guess. But that's, I mean, that's really not within our ability to control, right?
Uh, yeah, that's true. What, what we've proposed, um, to the board for this site, the Mama Luke site, uh, to the extent if it changes based on how uh, the borough and Verizon Wireless end up on the other system, the DAS system, we'll, you know, we'll adjust accordingly and present to the board whatever is needed.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, is it acceptable to the board members that we carry this to, to March?
It is. I have a quick question. Uh, when will we know from, uh, the, I guess, well, when will, Mr. DeLucre, when will you know from the town? Um, whether or not you'll be able to hear the, we'll hear the application in March?
Uh, the application for what we call the DAS system, distributed antenna system, um, was filed, I think, I mean, I'm gonna say around, uh, 12th or the 15th of this month. And they have a 90-day window for decision. So my expectation is the, um, the borough will certainly honor the 90 days, but probably come in before then. But even before the final decision, we'll have a pretty good picture of whether and to what extent the DAS system that we, as we presented it, is, is getting adjusted.
Okay. Is there any chance you could just let us, uh, maybe get back to us? Or, Mr. Kennedy, can we make this happen where uh, they could get back to us with enough time that if they're going to carry their meeting, uh, we can use that spot in the agenda for someone else?
Yes. I think, uh, Rich, you, you, you heard sort of our, you know, agenda issues with the pandemic and, and things. So you understand that we're going to need to know as, as soon as reasonably possible, just so that if for some reason you're not going, we can put some other applicant on and, and maximize productivity. And I'm sure you would not have any issues or objections with that.
No, no, not at all. We'll definitely do that.
Okay. So, April, what, what is the, um, meeting date?
March 25th.
Okay. So, uh, Rich, uh, do you on behalf of your client consent to extend the timeframe within which the board has to act on the matter?
I do. We do.
Okay. And, and you're, you're asking, I think, Mr. Chairman, I'm assuming he's asking for no further notice.
We, yes, we are asking that.
Thank you. All right. Uh, then can I have a motion to carry the me- uh, carry the New York SNSA Limited Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless application to the March 25th regular meeting?
I make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Capoli.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Malango.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
And, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Anyone opposed? And then, uh, just for the record, uh, to our new board, board members, um, uh, if you are so inclined and if, because this is a continuation, uh, if you want to actually participate, well, when it comes in March, you're absolutely positively 100% allowed to participate and ask questions and, and make comments. But when it comes to actual voting, and I, I don't know who alternate and what number alternates people are, but in act, if in order for you to officially vote, assuming that you'd be one of the voters, uh, you would need to certify that you've either read the transcripts of this particular hearing or listened to the tape. So if you're interested, you can coordinate with, with, uh, April, uh, so you can listen to the tape. I'd say it was about hour, hour and a half. Um, my memory might be wrong. And then if you wanted to, you could participate. Otherwise, you're not allowed to vote, but you can make comments. But that's, and that's just a standing rule for all. And it would be the same thing if, if, if Mr. Lisco was not here at that last meeting, same thing. So just, uh, keep that in mind.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. All right. We are done with our business and we're up to our one and only application tonight. It's for Tony Almeida. Uh, thank you, Mr. DeLucre.
Thank you.
All right. We have Tony Almeida at 419 10th Avenue.
And, Mr. Chairman, uh, as, uh, the, well, in the old days, I'd say as the applicant team is coming forward, but I guess now I say as the applicant's team is logging on, can I just make a couple of quick procedural notices?
Yeah, please do, Mr. Kennedy.
All right. So first up, uh, momentarily, we are going to ask for any comments on if anyone had any questions or comments regarding the sufficiency of the notice they received from the applicant's attorney in connection with this application. And if they do, they can raise their computer icons on, uh, on their screen or uh, we have a, uh, very well-staffed, uh, uh, board secretary's office who is equipped to handle uh, questions, uh, access questions that may come up if people are having access uh, issues with the computer. And April, if any such people were having access-related issues, how would they get in touch with you?
They can email clerk@belmar.com.
Okay. And in, uh, what we'll do is, uh, uh, good evening, Mr. Shipers.
Good evening.
What we'll do is-
Bill, is there anyone else that needs to be on video?
Yes. Tom Peterson should be here. We talked with him uh, before you started your meeting. And I see Rich DeFalco. Uh, I see his name. I don't see his picture. Um, Richie, can you hear us? So my computer shows Rich and Tom on my bottom right, but I'm not a computer guy, so. Richie.
And there's Tom.
It's like Tom.
Okay. So what we'll do is we'll mark into the record what we as a board have, have before us. Um, and by the way, for those who, when I'm, I'm zooming out, that means I'm, I'm writing, so I, uh, apologize. But we'll mark as A1 is the development application and that's dated September 9th, 2020. And then as A2, we have the Borough of Belmar, uh, application checklist. And A3 will be the Borough of Belmar Minor Land Use Certificate. And that appears to be dated January 22nd, 2021 and January 26th, 2021. And A4 is the, uh, plans prepared by JKR Engineering. And that is dated June 31st. I'm sorry, August 31st, 2020. And it's, uh, three sheets. So that was A4. And A5 is the architectural plans prepared by Tom Peterson Architect. And that is dated August 25th, 2020. And that's consisting of three sheets. And we'll swear in Ted Bianchi. Ted, you are the Borough Zoning Officer and Construction Official. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide any, will be the truth, the best of your knowledge to help you, God? Okay. So let the record reflect that, uh, our friend Ted has been sworn. April, has anyone expressed any, uh, desires to speak regarding the, the notice?
No.
Okay. So the board secretary and I reviewed the notice and found everything to be in order. So it'd be my, uh, humble opinion that we have jurisdiction to proceed. And, Mr. Chair, with your, uh, consent, I'll turn it over to, uh, Mr. Shipers.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Kennedy. If I could just remind everybody to, uh, if you're not the one speaking, please keep your mic muted for the application. Take it away, Mr. Shipers.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Lisco. Uh, first of all, I'd like to introduce myself to the new members of the board. Congratulate them for joining this esteemed board. Uh, my name is William J. Shipers. I'm an attorney on Main Street next to the Dunkin' Donuts, perhaps the reason for part of my size. Um, I've been, uh, in this town for about 25 years. I appear often for the board. Um, I'd like to welcome you and I look forward to working with you. Have the pleasure tonight of representing the Almeidas, who are to my right and far right. Uh, Mr. Almeida will be one of my witnesses. Uh, I'm going to also be calling engineer Rich DeFalco uh, and architect Tom Peterson. Rich DeFalco, you'll hear, has been around, uh, probably longer than I, no offense, Rich. And Tom has probably been around almost as long as I before these boards. We welcome your questions and your input. And generally, when we come before the board, we believe in our applications and we look for 7-0 votes. Uh, because we want to build the best project for our clients and for the belt, and for the borough. So, uh, with that said, a very, very short, brief introduction. I'm going to try to be relatively quiet. You'll learn, I'm also kind of uh, long-winded sometimes and maybe the board will keep me in check this year, uh, 21. Uh, Mr. Kennedy, we may want to mark one more document, which is a minor land use, uh, zoning permit, uh, two pager by Mr. Bianchi, where he has called out, uh, uh, some potential, uh, variance issues that were, uh, within the plan. But I think he has a few comments on, uh, on the plan. I think that may be appropriate, just a more-
Sure. You know what? I might have, I might have, um, entered this as A3, April, did I?
Uh, yeah, I think you did. I think you did call it out as A3. I'm sorry.
Got it.
All right. So, uh, very, very brief introduction. Um, the Almeidas, uh, currently uh, are the owners of 419 10th Avenue, block 103, lot 10. Uh, it is a two, uh, unit, single structure. Uh, so it is a multi-family. Uh, 10th Avenue, as we all know, is one of our, our signature entryways, both from Route 35 or Main Street down to the beach. And, uh, I'm so proud and happy that, uh, Tony and his wife bought this property because as you're going to hear, they fell in love with the, the lot and the area. And I've probably been coming down 10th for at least 45 years. And when I've looked at this unit and the architectural lack of uh, input to this project, I've said, oh, and I think I've gotten a tightness in my chest and my belly when I looked at this box and said, oh, God, will I live to see the day when this box comes down? And thankfully, the Almeidas walked through my office door within the last year. And they said, we own this property and we want to try to do something positive with it. So the, the Almeidas, uh, their desire is to, uh, and this will amend a little bit of what I wrote in my application. They're not tearing the front building down. They are renovating and expanding somewhat the front building. But they want to transfer and keep the two-unit, uh, use. So this is an expansion of a non-conforming use, expanding a two-unit, non-conforming, which are both rentals now, to a two-unit, uh, property, which would be a principal home in the front and a one-bedroom, uh, apartment over the, uh, garage. You'll hear testimony from Mr. Almeida regarding the, the nature and character of the neighborhood that such, uh, an arrangement is, uh, is not a, uh, uh, or is, is common within the neighborhood. And over the years, this board, uh, and with me at a minimum, have had the opportunity, and tonight I say is a, a good opportunity for the Borough of Belmar as well as the Almeidas, to take a property that really um, needs some help, uh, turn into a far better zoning alternative, a far better aesthetic plan, a far better livable plan, a far better plan, uh, for not only the principal residence, but a back lot. And hopefully encourage perhaps the property next to it to consider something similar and to continue the process of realizing that when people come in and really want to renovate these type of properties, you have to potentially give, allow them some leeway. Or, or the Almeidas would keep the property as they bought it as a rental. And, and I don't think that's in the best interest of the borough. I think when we can get families and single-family home styles, when people are going to invest hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not a million or more on a property, we're going to eliminate part of the chaos that we see throughout the borough. And we continue to, uh, well organize our neighborhoods more to the master plan. So with that, uh, we're not here looking for a blank lot and saying, give us to a non-conforming use. We're looking to expand on that. I will defer further comments to Rich DeFalco, who is also a planner for you who are new to the board. So he will give you planning information, I suspect, as to why this is such a good thing for the borough. So without further ado, Mr. Lisco, I'm going to call Antonio Almeida, who is, uh, the owner of the property of 419. He is to my right. And, uh, I'd ask you swear in there.
Hi, good evening and, uh, welcome to the Belmar Zoning Board. If you could just raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record, please.
It's, uh, Antonio Almeida, 419 10th Ave., Belmar, Jersey, 0771.
Okay. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, to the best of your knowledge, to help you, God?
Yes, I do.
But, thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Um, Tony, I'm going to call you Tony. That's okay?
Absolutely.
Tony, to your right is your lovely wife, correct?
Correct.
Uh, she's probably not going to testify, but, uh, you guys have been married quite some time?
13 years.
You have a few children?
One.
One. You've been coming to Belmar for how long?
35-plus years.
Uh, does your dad also, uh, ha- own some property in Belmar now?
Collectively, as a family, he does, on 8th Avenue.
Okay. So, uh, it was your intention, you saw this property. Tell, tell the board what your original intention was when you saw this property, 419 10th.
Well, my, my wife and I grew inches to the property for a variety of reasons. Uh, one, it's not in a flood zone. Two, uh, it has the potential to be something fabulous, not only for ourselves, but also for the community. Uh, it's a corner lot, which is ideal if you want a little bit of privacy from neighbors. And, um, overall, I anticipate a good visual representation of what's going on in certain sections of our community. And I'm hopeful that the board recognizes that and, and, uh, grants us our wishes, if you will.
And your wish is that you, your intention would be if the board was, uh, to, to so grant your variance, this is going to be your principal home, the front, uh, structure?
The intent is to beautify and expand on the main dwelling, uh, and have it potentially be our primary residence. And then, uh, the home currently does not have a basement. So there is a need for, uh, garage. And we'd like to take the non-conforming use, uh, and push that into a side street, uh, apartment above a garage.
Uh, are you willing to de-restrict the, uh, apartment to annual rental as opposed to seasonal, including summer rental?
If that's an absolute requirement of the board, we would give it some consideration.
Okay. Um, is there anything else you'd like to add for the board, um, that I have omitted, uh, because I just have not brought it to the forefront?
Um, let me, I can touch on, there's a, there's a variety of, of non-conforming use in this particular area of Belmar. Unfortunately, we don't have, like, I could show a grid diagram if you will. Unfortunately, I don't think you're really going to be able to see it, but front house, back house situation.
This is normal, Mr. Kennedy, where I would approach with a, a document, but maybe, maybe we can see that if I put that up. Is the board able to see this document? Hello?
Yeah, April, I mean, is there a, uh, Mr. Chairman, I say this not knowing of what I speak, but, uh, is there a share- is there a share screen button that, April, that you can make it?
Is that one of the exhibits that was marked?
No, this was not marked. Mr. Almeida brought this to me. He had previously done this. It did not make it into the, the packet. This is an aerial of the block, and of the block, I think he would comment on the number of surrounding dwellings that are front house with a rear house cottage behind. I don't know, Kevin, if we have a way to virtually mark a document, I guess I'm feeling right, these hearings as well.
All right. So April, what do we have, to A6?
Yes.
All right. So why don't we mark this as A6, and I guess the only, it's an aerial photograph, and if you wouldn't, Mr. Shapers, tomorrow, if you could possibly somehow get an electronic version of that to, to our board secretary?
I will.
Great.
So while, while I'm doing that, let me just flip the page. This was the beauty to which I commented in my opening as the existing structure. Perhaps we could amend that to A7.
A7 is a picture, a picture of the existing home taken by?
That would be by Mr. Almeida.
Okay. And roughly when?
Several months ago.
Okay. So it's an accurate depiction of what exists on the site now?
Mr. Almeida? Yes.
Thank you. And Bill, you can just send that to April tomorrow as well.
That I will. I'm going to return the exhibit A6 back to Mr. Almeida and just have him comment on the surrounding nature of the neighborhood, of the block, just.
That general geographic area, again, we're focused on the area of 10th, intersection of 10th Avenue and D Street, as in David. There are a magnitude of non-conforming uses in that geographic area. They are either garden-style apartment dwellings, or they are front house, back house situations, or they are two families in the front with third additional houses in the back. So a multifamily situation on this particular block is certainly not uncommon. Furthermore, front house, back house appears to be more common than a duplex-style garden apartment or rental unit. I would also like to note that most of the homes on this street are in superior condition and maintain, you know, well-manicured properties. However, there are also properties in this general geographic area in close proximity to the project that my wife and I are here presenting on that are animal house ordinances that continuously get violations regarding tickets and summer rentals, if you will. However, we're willing to, the intent, again, is to establish a primary residence and hopefully beautify this intersection, as well as provide a good home for ourselves and our family.
Thank you. I would move those two that were marked into evidence for consideration, Mr. Listo and Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you.
My next, I'm sorry?
I said, thank you, that's all.
Oh, thank you. My next witness I'd offer is Mr. Peterson, and Mr. Peterson, I see is, is on, and perhaps you can swear, Mr. Peterson.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Peterson. If you could just state your name and spell your last name?
You're on mute, Mr. Peterson. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. My name is Tom Peterson, Thomas Peterson, the architect on the project. My address is 6 Country Lane, Howell, New Jersey.
All right. Good evening. If you could just raise your right hand, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, to the best of your knowledge, to help you, God?
I do.
And just for the record, you're testifying tonight in your capacity as a licensed architect?
Correct.
And I think Mr. Shapers will have you explain some of your credentials, especially since we have some new board members.
Sure.
So, so Mr. Peterson, following Mr. Kennedy, could you give a brief overview of your education, of your experience, of your licensing, what states, what is your practice?
For sure. The bulk of my practice is residential architecture here on the Jersey Shore. I got my degree in architecture in Chicago, of all places, back in 1979. Got my license in New Jersey in 1982, so we're closing in on 40 years. I'm also licensed in several other states, New York, Massachusetts, Connecticut, Rhode Island, Pennsylvania, North and South Carolina, although obviously the bulk of our work is here in New Jersey. I've appeared before boards hundreds of times, I've been before you guys, although the last time Manny was there and he was handing out candy, so I missed that, although I guess it wouldn't happen over the computer anyway, but, and I'll, I'll say one other thing, happy new year to everybody. I'm not sure how long you can keep saying that, but a happy new year and also congratulations on the various appointments and elections.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. Tom, please give the board the, let's say, tour, or requests that the Almeida's requested of you when they came in and perhaps presented a survey or as-built to you and put it upon you to take the beast and make the beast beautiful.
Sure. So last year, early on last year, Tony and Tina came to me with a house that they had bought or were just about to purchase, which is the house that we're looking at now, the subject property, and had very quickly decided that what they wanted to do was to take the main residence there, which is actually a two-family, turn it into the single-family home that you see before you now, which would become their residence, and then build a detached garage apartment in back, a two-story with the garage on the first floor and the one-bedroom unit up above. The, the plan and what we have presented is to take the existing structure, not tear it down in front, convert it from two-family into one, much more conventional layout, of course, with the open family area down on the first floor, bedrooms on the second floor, and then some unfinished space up on the top floor. But they had a strong desire to turn this into something that looks like it belongs on the shore, a true Belmar home with a covered porch, some different roof lines, some different roof peaks. The structure as it exists right now, Bill was very gracious in saying that it was an eyesore, because it is, it's a very plain-looking building, and I'm sure you've all seen it. It does look like what it is, which is a small garden apartment, two units, one unit up above, one unit down below, certainly not the type of a, a structure or dwelling where families would be living there and raising their family. So the, the task that they gave me was to take this structure, turn it into a single-family home that they could raise their family in, and then design the garage apartment in back, which was the garage on the first floor and the one-bedroom room up above. So you can see the, the layout is very straightforward. As I said, the first floor is mostly the open family areas. We've got the kitchen-dining family room area, which is open in back, very much with what you would consider contemporary requirements. We've got some functional space down there, too, a family area, an open office in front, which is increasingly a requirement, and then the bedroom space up above. We have room for a little bit of an attic area up above, which is unfinished for now, but we keep within the requirements for those habitable spaces up above. The, the fun of this project was the, was being able to turn it into something that looks like it belongs in Belmar, and that's where you see the strong aesthetic of the, the structure, the covered porch in front, some of the ins and outs of the, the shape of the, the building. One of the things I want to mention is that we are pulling out slightly towards D, but that's so that we can get some different roof lines there and give it some different textures and some different depth, which is important because that really is a hallmark of the seashore style of architecture that you see, not just in Belmar, but up and down the coast. And we tried to do the same thing with the garage apartment in back, not make it just a plain garage with the space up above, but do some different things with the roof lines, do some different things with some different types of siding. You can see that the windows are very much in keeping with that historic style that we see, that still is timeless and very popular. And in the end, when you take a look at what we're proposing versus what's there now, it's, it's a dramatic improvement in terms of aesthetic.
Could you give the board the benefit of what type of recommended or proposed roofing, siding, sheathing?
Sure.
packages that you're recommending to the Almeida's?
Sure. So in terms of style, in terms of materials, we're talking about, right now, it's a very plain vinyl siding, so what we're talking about is some type of either a hardy board type of a siding or a vinyl type of siding that has some cedar shingle style to it. We're talking about some different clapboard styles up above in the peaks to give it some texture. If you take a look at the windows that we're using, the double-hung windows with the, the top grills and the bottom, the so-called vanity glass, we've proposed those things as well. Right now, the structure has casement windows, which is more of a contemporary style or a modern style, certainly not what I would consider that traditional style that we find on the shore. You can see that we've also done some things with some trim lines, there's a freeze board underneath the eaves, we've got some heavier trim around the windows, also very much in keeping with that seashore-style vernacular. And then the different roof peaks that we tried to introduce on the side, you know, you guys see this all the time, corner lots are tough because you have two front elevations. So in this case, it's not just what we have along 10th, but it's also what we have along, what we'd call a side-street, but it's still a street. So that's why we have those small bumpouts there with a nice rhythm of windows and the roof lines up above. So it, it's those subtle things that give the house a certain sparkle and a, a sense that it belongs in town.
On the D Street side, I note, following up on your testimony, you made a secondary entryway into the mudroom, giving an aesthetic of almost two front yards when you look at it from either D or from 10th, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Along with your corresponding, I call it dormers or roof lines, indicating almost a tower effect, along a longer side-street for aesthetic purposes.
Yes. In, in other words, to, to break up, without those, you have a long roof line, it starts to, again, look very plain. So we wanted to do something to break that up, but if, if you go through town, you see that that's a very common feature, and that's really, you know, a way to give it that subtle treatment that it's something that you would see in, in any of the short towns.
All right. And railings are going to be what type of recommended material?
It's probably going to be the vinyl composite type of railing. We haven't picked out what, what sort of hand, the, the handrail that we would use on that. But again, all of this is meant to look like the classic traditional style of architectural and architectural features that you would find in, in town.
All right. And it is a four-bedroom, correct?
Yes.
Which means bedroom over the garage.
Correct.
I'm sorry, what was that, four-bedroom plus what?
Plus one over the garage.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Tom, I think you've dropped well time. I will ask you to offer any final or additional comments. I just did not solicit because of either hour of the day or getting old.
Well, we're all getting old. You know, there's really not much more to say. It's a very universal type of a, a layout. The, the features and the things are very much in keeping with the types of features and, and the arrangement of things that we see. It's almost, I always try to look for a style and look for a presentation that's timeless. We don't want anything that's quirky, we don't want anything that becomes dated very quickly. This is the type of a home that 50 years from now, when we drive by, it will still look like a seashore home that belongs in Belmar, and that's, that's the goal.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Mr. Kennedy, do you want to open for comments and/or?
Sure. I defer to the chairman.
Yeah, I, I think we'll hold our comments to the end. Thank you, Mr. Shapers.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Listo. Next and final witness would be Mr. DeFalcow.
All right. Good evening, Mr. DeFalcow. If you could just state your name and spell your last name, please?
Richard DeFalcow, D-I-F-O-L-C-O.
All right. And tonight, you are testifying in your capacity as an engineer and planner?
That is correct.
Okay. If you could raise your right hand, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, to the best of your knowledge, to help you, God?
I do.
Thank you.
All right. Rich, you're sworn to tell the truth about how long you've been doing this, what your education is, how many times before boards and what you do.
So welcome board members. I've been doing this probably the, the early 80s. I'm a licensed engineer since 1977 and a licensed planner since 1982. I am the principal owner of JKR Engineering and Planning. We're located in Freehold, and I've appeared before Belmar for more than 20 years, probably have several dozen projects that have been built and approved up and down Main Street and single families and along the ocean. So I am well aware of the development that's happened over the past quarter-century in Belmar, and this project is one of those that will add to the beautiful part of Belmar. There are some parts, like the existing home, that needs to be looked at and replaced, and the applicant, I think, is proposing a beautiful renovation, so. I was a graduate of Rutgers University, and that's really it. I've appeared before this board and many boards in Monmouth, Ocean County, Middlesex County, from down as far south as Long Beach Island, all the way up to, like by Greenwood Lake in the top of the state. So I've been throughout the whole state. I primarily work in Monmouth County, which is where I live, and with the remote, it's a lot easier to go other places, but I still prefer working in this county.
Mr. Chairman, I'd offer Mr. DeFalcow as an engineer, as an expert, both in engineering and in New Jersey planning.
Of course. Welcome back, Mr. DeFalcow. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
So Rich, I'm going to rely upon your expertise and your site plan and your drawing. I'm going to ask you to take the board through existing, the existing as-built survey, your proposed site plan, your, your zoning grid. I'd like Mr. Capoli to know where the electric's going. I'd like to know where water source is going. I'd like to know that the air conditioners are within setbacks, and then discuss whatever variance necessities are required.
Okay. April, is it possible to put any of the plans on the screen?
Sure. Give me one sec.
We'll start with Mary, first page number one, you can. And is there a way to just zoom into the zone chart in the upper right? Because that's really, besides where it's located, and I think, does everybody know where it's located at the corner of 10th and D? Not in a flood zone, as Mr. Almeida stated, but the site is in the R75 zone, and the chart has three main columns, required column, an existing column, and a proposed column. The zone requires the corner lot in the R75 to be 9,000 square feet, and this lot exists at 7,500 square feet. There's no adjacent land to purchase, and the proposal is to maintain that square footage and request a variance on lot size, although it's an existing. Although it's a existing condition. The ordinance also has a sixty-foot width of a corner lot at in the zone where only fifty is existing. And fifty is proposed, and again, existing condition. The front yard setback required is twenty feet, and there's no variance from that requirement. The side yard setback is five feet. And that's to the east, and there's no variance there where we have almost eight feet of side yard. The total of two side yards does not apply since it's a corner and the street's the other side. The rear yard of forty is the requirement, and we have eighty point eight feet to the principal dwelling. There's a, there's a criteria called lot shape, where you draw a circle and the circle has to fit within the setback lines. And in the ordinance, it says it has to be thirty feet, but this lot only has a twenty-five foot circle that could fit, and that's what's proposed. The twenty-five foot circle. Uh, the building height, we comply with the building height. We're a couple of feet below, about a foot and a half below the maximum allowable. The floor area ratio is fifty-five percent, and we comply with that. Lot coverage is fifty percent, and we comply with that. We have forty-four percent. The the only variance that we're seeking relative to the lot uh, and the building, the primary building, is the building coverage. And we're seven point one percent above the twenty-five percent maximum. And that is due to the fact that we're building the garage. And above the garage, we're putting the apartment, the one-bedroom apartment. We're adding slight addition to the north side of the building, going out towards 10th Avenue and putting on a porch. Covered porch counts as building coverage. So when you add the garage and the porch and the slight addition and a little piece on D that we're adding for aesthetic purposes, it brings us up to thirty-two point one percent. We have adequate off-road parking. In my take on the ordinance, we did get the the zoning memo from the minor land use permit. And it said that we need five parking spaces. And we only have that we need five, but the way I read the code in section forty-nine one, it says a two-family dwelling requires three spaces. Uh, and anything more than four bedrooms also requires three spaces. But we do show spaces on the site, and I'll get into the site plan after this chart. We also have
I'm sorry, Rich, I'm sorry to, uh, this is Kevin, just interrupt you. Just uh, your uh, what is the parking? Just the totals? How many are needed and what's proposed?
I believe three are needed and three are proposed.
Thank you. We'll come back to that. Thanks.
Yeah, I'll go over that with the site plan. The accessory structure, which is the garage slash apartment above, has a side setback and rear setback of three feet, which it does comply with. And the building height is a variance request, eighteen feet is allowed and twenty-four feet. And two stories is proposed. So we are going six feet above the maximum height, and that's because of the second floor. And it's not one story, it's two stories. The the ordinance does provide in the building coverage portion of the code, it does not include a detached garage of up to forty and forty square feet in the calculation. However, in our case, we're not applying that to our site. We do not get that credit. If we were only building a garage, we'd be allowed to build a garage, and it would not count towards building coverage. But in our case, since we have living above it, it does, it does not get that credit. Uh, one other thing is that the impermeable is calculated at fifty percent wherever we show a paver. We have paver sidewalks, paver driveways, paver patio. So those surfaces are are credited fifty percent if we use pavers in in luau concrete. So the applicant has committed to use pavers. And that's the cover sheet. I think we can go to page two.
Mr. DeFalcow, the pavers are going to be permeable pavers?
Yes, they will be. Alright, so you leave it just like that, April. It's great. So at the bottom of the plan is a, is a section called existing condition plan, demolition plan. That is what the property looks like today. The shaded rectangle to the right of that is the home. There's a porch facing 10th Avenue. There's a porch to the east facing the neighboring house, which is a two-family house built from the same architect plan. The driveway is the area to the left or south. It's crosshatched. And it extends from a driveway cut at D Street. At one time, it ran through to the next lot, but there is separation now. It does not connect. The air conditioning units are at the rear. And there are curbing and sidewalk along D. Now, several years ago, the borough took away the circle, I'm sorry, the uh, I guess you'd call it a circle. Uh, traffic circle and made it a straight intersection. There used to be uh, traffic pattern that was restricted. And parking is still restricted along D Street. There were areas where you can park and areas that assign no parking. I believe those signs that are still there today are remnants of the pre-circle or the area that was before they took away the circle. And we might wanna ask the mayor and council just to kinda, if those are not needed anymore, make that available parking so that we can have anybody in the neighborhood use parking on D Street. Right now, it's it's signed, no parking along the frontage of this property along D Street. It's a four-way stop sign, stop condition. And that's existing condition right now. It's pretty much uh, as Mr. Shipers uh described. It's a, it's a two-story box in the corner. Uh, it looks like a uh, I don't know how simple to make it, but it's four sides with the one A roof on it, and it couldn't be made any uglier, I guess, is the way to put it. Look above the site plan, utility plan, and that's what Mr. Almeida is proposing. And the bump out on D is uh, it's about a, I think it's eighteen inches closer to the road, but it it provides aesthetic architectural relief to that side of the elevation on D Street. The porch on 10th Avenue is shown, meets all the setback requirements. And the addition to the home is slightly uh, I think it's about eight feet, eight-foot addition from the old house to the north will be the new inside space. The house will be extended toward 10th Avenue. We place the air conditioners and the pool equipment outside of the side setback on the east side of the house. You can see those rectangles. Behind the house, proposed patio and a pool and walkways connecting to the driveway. We plan to relocate the the apron of the driveway at D, oriented towards the center of the garage. And then provide a space for the apartment tenant along the suburb of the property line with a ribbon driveway with grass between the two ribbons where the cars' wheels would be riding over. And in the garage, there are two parking spaces. So when we said there's three on the plan, we count two in the garage and one for the apartment. There's room in the driveway, obviously, for cars to park as well. The yard will be fenced in, and an outdoor shower is proposed adjacent to the garage corner. We are proposing to repair concrete sidewalk and curving where the old and new driveways need to be worked on. And April, if you could just go to sheet three, I think that gives a a good picture. At the bottom is a colored landscape plan, which maybe helps you visualize how much of it's gonna be green, how much of it's gonna be planted, and where the pavers and the pool. The brown or areas are mulched beds around the landscaping. So it really turns the corner from something that is not very attractive into something that you kinda can't wait to drive by. It's gonna be so nice. So I think that the architect did a great job on the house plan. I think the site is deep enough that it lays out that the apartment and the garage are adequately separated from the front house. And uh, short of that building coverage variance for the extra building area and the height of the apartment, the site itself complies with the residential zone that is in the R seventy-five zone. And it would, I think, complement the zoning area and zone in the area. Um, but from a utility point of view, we would propose individual service connections for the garage apartment. And underground electric services so that there won't be any overhead wires to the site. We, we believe that the the slight uh increase in uh, in paved areas will not negatively impact the drainage. Does the drain, right on the corner, you can see that rectangle at the corner of D and 10th. The drain is right in front of our property. And it all slopes down to the corner. So whatever comes off the lock was running through the catch basin. It doesn't affect the neighbors at all. It all drains away. That's the site plan portion of the of the application. I can get into some of the planning now, Bill, if that's the right time to take this.
Yeah, yeah, yes, Rich. And I, you know, I want you, and I know you will, but I just want you to mention it or do your analysis on substantial detriment, if if any, uh, uh, positive, negative criteria and particular suitability of this proposal on this lot.
Right, the this is a pre-existing non-conformant use. House was built in the mid-eighties. It predates the ordinance. The ordinance of the borough was nineteen ninety-two when it was codified. Uh, it's a pre-existing use. And the proposal is actually to reduce the intensity of use, as stated before by Mr. Almeida and Mr. Shipers. We're we're making one of these uses. It's a two, it's a two-family use, but we're putting a primary principal use back onto the property. Uh, which would be the focus of the site. And secondarily, we have an accessory structure, which is the apartment. It's a one-bedroom apartment. Uh, I think we talked about a, an limited to an annual rental. There won't be a month-to-month type rental. Uh, we don't want animal house type. This, this site would not lend itself to that kind of environment. We have a family living in the dwelling. Uh, not renting it out. So I think that aspect of it is important. This, the area itself, as Mr. Almeida said, does have I would say fifty percent or greater number of homes with two-family uses with house behind, some with house on the side. Directly across the street, there's one, uh, one lot over, there's one. Across of 10th, there's a couple. Uh, if you look at the aerial photograph, it's obvious that this is common to the neighborhood. It's not a new use. Variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good because the application is not a new non-permitted use. Likely not to involve any substantial impairment of the zone plan because it's been there. It's been a two-family use. It's a legal two-family pre-existing use. The fact that it can continue will not create substantial impairment of the zone plan. It's designed in such a manner as to minimize non-conformity and increase compatibility with the zone by making the front house look like the front house should look, compatible with the single-family aesthetics, the size of a single-family home, the setbacks of a single-family home. It's compatible with the zone. Uh, and as I said before, the garages and units above are typical in this block and block across the street. So I don't see any negative on this. I see all positives. I see it's a less intense type of a use where now the rentals, I think it's approved for ten or twelve uh occupants to be in that building right now. When we're all done here, we're gonna have a family of three or four in the main house. And maybe two in the garage. So you're going from a potential population of ten or twelve down to six. We have about half the density of population. I think it's a less intense use only because of the breakout of the primary use from the apartment use. There's no control now of the apartment use. But there will be control over the appearance of the site, the upkeep of the site. And the, the parking will not be as much as needed now either, with less occupants.
Rich, from the housing stock, you're, you're familiar with the uh, average age of the housing stock by reviewing the last few uh, master plan reviews, are you not?
Yeah, the housing stock is uh, most of the houses, the majority of the housing stock in Belmar is well-aged. I mean, this happens to be not as old as most of the stock, which is in the nineteen twenty, nineteen forty era. So this being built, I believe in the mid-eighties, is like the new old, but it's, if this was a nineteen eighties home that was built with a nice architectural style, it would be it would be different. But this was built as if it was a nineteen twenties home, and appearance was anyway. Uh, there's nothing that can be done to uh, to change that appearance other than renovation, which the applicant is proposing. But the, but the need is to, to keep the housing stock uh, current uh, and replace things that do get old. Uh, there's also the need to have the the two-family, in this case, that provide opportunity for some diversity in the, in the the population to get into that apartment rather than having to buy a home. Or be a, the uh, it just gives them a chance to be in Belmar. And I think the applicant uh, has done a good job with with his plan, still provides most of the zone criteria that the borough requires. But it makes the corner lot into something that if you drive by it, it looks like it's, it should be in the zone. The two, it's a, a two-family lot, but you don't see the two-family apartment appearance that it is today. So I think it's gonna benefit the borough, both aesthetically, it, it's compatible with the homes around it. And I think it's a less intense use overall.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. DeFalcow.
Thank you, Mr. Shipers. Is that the end of your application?
That is.
Alright. Thank you very much. Uh, well, with that, we'll open it up to board questions. Uh, and we'll roll Uh, and we'll roll through all of the, um, voting members and then we'll, uh, also go to the alternates tonight, uh, to give them a chance to ask questions and comment when it's, uh, when it's at time. So why don't we start off the questions with Mr. Fitzgerald tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
And welcome to our new members. I hope you find being on the board to be a, a a positive experience and good civic duty. The original, um, note from Ted, uh, said that the current, um, structure was going to be raised. Like, I don't mean raised up. I mean raised, like knocked down. So there seems to be a change in plans where you're going to renovate the existing building as opposed to knock it down?
Well, no, the, the original application, I think, had a, had a typographical error. The word raised shouldn't have been there. It should have been renovate.
Okay.
The intent was always proposed. There was no change in that plan. I think the form had a typo.
Okay. Is there going to be, is there going to be, um, significant structural modifications made to the existing cube? That's there now? That's basically four walls and a roof, um, or like, are you gonna, are you gonna be cutting out beams or cutting in or, or adding additions? I, I'm having a hard time from the diagram seeing how that box structure is going to be modified.
I'll, I'll answer that one. Um, there are some structural modifications, but the exterior walls stay the same. The floor system, first of all, the first floor system stays exactly the same. The foundation will stay the same, other than where we're adding on. The, um, opening up of areas in the back, opening up where there's a family room and a kitchen and all that will require some interior girders, um, but the floor system itself stays.
My, my questions are more about the outside of the house, but I appreciate hearing about things changing on the inside as well. But, but visually from the outside, is it, or is it pretty much the same box that's there now?
Well, it's pretty much the same box except where we're adding. So we're adding to the front, we're adding to the side, but the, the box itself, the main box itself um, does remain, um, it's, other than, except of course, where we're adding out to the front, that exterior wall then gets removed.
Okay, great. Um, I, I'm, I'm making assumption, but I'm going to ask because I, I, I believe I know the answer, but, um, I don't see the, um, AC condenser for the, for the garage apartment. And, and, and I know that the building looks like there's three. So I presume that one of those three is probably for the garage, but could you please confirm? Condenser for the garage is showing on the plan?
Yeah, the one for the garage is adjacent to the residential, the main house units. And it's within distance where they can still service the garage apartment from the condenser being at the corner of the home.
There's no issue with proximity there in terms of distance away from the garage?
No, it's
And, and, and how about the utilities themselves, like the electric? Is it going to be its own electric meter, its own gas meter? Its own water? It's going to be rated for its own water, um, meter too, or?
Yes, it will be. It makes life much simpler that way.
Okay. And the last question I have is, um, it, I, I, I know for garage structures, you know, we allowed a three-foot, um, setback off of the property line, but since this is no longer just a garage and it's going to become residential, um, is there any consideration on, on adding a little more, um, space than the three feet perhaps in, it's, um, matching either the property line with the house, which I don't know if it's five, but you know, could, could you make that three go to five or, or give a little more space there? Because that three foot is really intended for true garage. It's going to be used as a garage, not, not as a, not as an apartment.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may respond to Mr. Fitzgerald. Uh, Mr. Fitzgerald, we understand and recognize your point. I think your point would be to say the easterly wall of the garage that has a three-foot setback, could you make it more of a five-foot conforming like a structure would be within town? Uh, the Almeidas would, uh, uh, agree with that and consent to that. They recognize it would just take two more feet out of the front of the driveway, but the driveway is still to a point twenty-four point nine and still make it twenty-two point four. So there would be a little give up of the, the front of the driveway, but the two feet, uh, based upon the additional height to, uh, twenty-four feet, we recognize here.
That would work, that would work on the setback and it would work on the orientation of the driveway. We still have same access and provide five feet in the rear. That
I think that's very reasonable. I, I think it gives the neighbor behind a little more, a little more breathing room. And I, I think it also for, for egress and access, in the case of emergency, uh, having five feet instead of three is, is, is significantly better. So, uh, appreciate that. I have no more questions.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Uh, next we'll go to Mr. Ross.
I'm going to find a mute button there. Okay, got it. Um, so on that same line, I just want to clarify that that recommendation would not decrease the three parking spaces that you have. You'd still have three parking spaces?
Yes, we sure would.
Okay, great. Um, on the driveway as well, have we resolved whether three is the appropriate number? Ted on the application says five. I know Mr. De, DeFalco believes it should be three. What's the verdict? Like, what are we saying on that?
Well, the front house requires three. The garage apartment, the minimum is one point five. The driveway is permitted to expand two feet past the opening of the garage. And for twenty feet, then it has to go back down to ten feet. They've got an expansion on the side of this, another at least ten feet with a parking space alongside the garage, which isn't permit. Uh, the grass plot down the center of the strips, that has to be lot coverage. You can leave the grass, but it counts as lot coverage and I'm sure it wasn't done that way.
Well, let's ask, I guess, Mr. DeFalco, was that considered in the lot coverage?
We did, we only counted the hard surface as lot coverage, not the grass that was between the two pavers, but we could include that. And we could also, and since the garage is pulling two feet away, we can shorten up on the length of those ribbons. And in addition to, to that, the, if you can see on the, on the plan, if you remember, anyway, at the south, the southwest corner of the garage is the access through the door to the apartment. And that's just where the ribbons begin. So right, right above the G of garage is the door. See the word G? I mean, the word garage. There's a, there's a jog in the front of the building. And that's the doorway going upstairs to the stairwell there. So what we were talking about was perhaps introduce like a landscape island in front of that door, which extends into the driveway to basically separate the main driveway, which I'd call it, which feeds the garage doors from the ribbons. So that we would not have a continuous width of driveway at the front of the garage. We would break it up and have a landscape island and then have an offshoot where you drive to the south edge for that ribbon area. That would be something the board would like to consider. We would do that.
I'm having a hard time visualizing it myself, but I, I guess my question was whether or not we, you needed a parking variance. Um, and it sounds like based on Ted's, um, read of the, the regulation you do, um.
Well, yeah, I mean, if, if we need a variance for the technical dimension that it's too wide at the door, uh, I was suggesting we introduce that landscape island to make it two pieces and not one piece. And I don't know, Ted, if that would satisfy the intent of the code. Uh, no different than if we put the driveway up against the back of the house. You'd have another driveway. But we would have basically a ribbon driveway separated by a small landscape there before we got to the front of the garage door. Have it separate, so not one continuous driveway width. I don't know if you understand what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, no, I do. Uh, but the driveway itself, the ribbons on the side, that, that would require a variance if you're going to park them.
Okay, well, then we'd have to ask for that variance, I would think. Again, it's fenced in. It's got a solid fence. You can't see it. I think it doesn't, and doesn't do any harm to, uh, to the area, uh, but it's a variance that if we needed, we should ask for it.
Yes. So I guess, I guess my point is you, it sounds like you need more than three parking spots and we would want, I, I don't see a problem with parking there. I kind of think it's good if the homeowner is going to be using the driveway as well because otherwise you, you kind of shuffle in cars. So I think that's a good spot for somebody that lives in that, um, apartment to, to park. Um, my question was whether you needed a variance. It sounds like you do. I think and I'll wait to hear other board members' comments, but I would prefer leaving that little parking spot there that can be utilized. Um, and make it a more functional driveway as opposed to eliminating that. But that's, I guess, I would like to hear other members comment on that when it's, when the time's appropriate.
Okay.
We can always come back to you as well, Mr. Ross, on this issue.
Uh, I, I did have one other question and it had to do, I, I apologize. It's the main drawings, um, Tom's main drawing, I think it was A two. I, I forgot the citation. I was, I think I mislabeled them. Um, and it has to do with the rear, the rear elevation picture. I don't know if you can pull that up, April, or not. But the, the question is, is when I look at the, um, yeah, scroll down to the exterior photos. There you go. Um, uh, you keep going down. Oh, and that's the garage. Yeah, there we go. Um, so the left side I see, and left side and right side, you're showing an exterior second floor balcony on, off the rear, but the bottom right corner there is the, the rear, and I don't see that. On the, um,
The, uh, yeah, those, those, the, uh, that's a porch off the front. That's off, that's on to tenth.
Oh, that's the front. Oh, maybe I missed. Okay, I was just looking at that incorrectly then. Okay, so that's the front porch. I was
Correct, yes.
Got it. There's nothing in the back then. It's just a, a little step up. Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so that's the front porch and then there's a balcony over it. My, all right, my apologies. Very good. Uh, and I think that's all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Uh, next up is Mr. Malengo.
Good evening and welcome new board members. Hope you enjoy your process here. I just have a couple of small questions. Thank you, board members that went first to ask most of the important questions. The ribbon area, Rich, this directed to you, that ribbon area is a parking space. Is that correct?
That is proposed to be a parking space for the apartment. Correct.
Okay, so my question is, although I'm much in favor of moving the garage to a five-foot setback, if we move that garage two feet forward, is that ribbon area still accessible?
Yes, it is, and it doesn't affect it at all. It's actually, the ribbon area is, is longer than it needs to be by about four feet as it is. So moving the garage two feet doesn't impact that at all. It's still parallel to it. It's not encroaching upon it. The two feet is a shift towards D Street, so it's in line with that ribbon. It's not encroaching on it or closer to it. It's going to work out just fine.
Okay, thank you for that. Questions, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Malengo. Uh, Mr. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So there, there's a sister building to the east, um, that looks exactly the same. Um, and that area that runs between, did, did, was, was I correct in, in understanding that that, um, looks like driveway or whatever is going to be split in half or is already split in half?
It's a sidewalk.
Oh, it is a sidewalk.
Sidewalk, yeah. As you come up from tenth, there is about a three-foot grade increase from the curb to the setback line. And there's a series of stairs, maybe four or five steps to get up to grade level at the home. And then it's continual beyond the steps, it's sidewalk that takes you to the parking lot in the back.
So the parking lot for that sister building looks like the excess, access to that comes from this property that you're, um,
No, it doesn't.
Want to develop. Is that correct?
No, it doesn't. Except it, it does not connect anymore.
Okay, well, I was just looking at Google, um, Earth, and it looked like that a parking lot went right through from D Street to that second building.
I don't believe so at this point. Uh, it's my take on it. Um, I'm going to go to Google myself right now and take a look.
Mr. Chairman, we can help Mr. Hutchinson if we're so allowed to, uh, assist.
Well,
Of course.
You, you don't have to because now I'm getting a little different view and I see to the east of that, uh, sister building, there is a driveway to the back.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, confirmed. They have a separate entrance out to tenth.
Okay, sorry. I, I just, uh, didn't, didn't chase that down enough. Um, there's no basement or is there a crawl? I'm just wondering where the mechanicals are because I don't see that in the, uh, in the plans.
Uh, I'll answer that one. The existing, uh, foundation is a crawl space. Uh, we're taking a look at whether or not we're going to do a, 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 a full or at least a walking height basement under the addition, which is eight feet. Um, but it's, it's, it's not much of a basement. That's where we would put mechanicals. We've also got room for mechanicals up in the unfinished attic area as well. Uh, we've talked on and off about could we try to carve out some more basement underneath the existing? That becomes kind of tough. That's an expensive thing to do, so.
Yeah.
Um, but at, at the very worst, we'll probably have some space underneath the addition where we can put some mechanicals. But keep in mind, it's only, you know, if it's an eight-foot addition, you lose a foot for a wall in the front. Uh, it's, uh, it's really, you know, nothing more than that.
Right, right. Well, that, that makes sense. Uh, where would the access to that come from?
If we do that, then in one way or the other, where the stairs from the first floor go up to the second floor, we would carve the access from there down into the, the space below because those stairs are towards the front. And, you know, possibly have to break out a little into the existing.
Okay. Um, let's see, what else did I have here? Um, you have some trees shown along the, uh, uh, along the curb on D Street and, uh, and on Tenth Avenue. Is that something that is intended or just aesthetic for the drawings?
Those are, those are existing trees.
They're existing and they're going to remain? They won't be, they won't be taken down during this?
There's no need to take them down. The sidewalk is remaining. The curb is remaining. The trees can also be remaining.
Okay, just a change in the curb cut.
Correct.
Okay. Um, let's see. I think that's all my questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson. Uh, next up is Mr. Capoli.
All right, here we are. Um, most of my questions have been answered, but I heard, uh, mentioned two or three times tonight in reference to other homes in the area that have had backhouses. My question would be, how many of these backhouses have been built in the last ten years?
I don't know that.
Would the answer probably be zero? We have no answer for that?
I don't know the answer, Bill.
I haven't, uh, had any building permits or any of them, uh, um.
Has, uh, then my other question to Ted is, as far as you know, has any been granted for a new structure since you've been on the board?
Uh, no.
No. Um, is it also a town ordinance to not have backhouses in it? And that's a question.
Well, they have a, they have a, an exception in there. If, if it's built a certain way, like the eaves have to be twelve feet, can't be more than six hundred and fifty square feet, that kind of a thing. Um, they make it, there, there's an exception in there.
Do we meet any of those? Do we meet any of those exceptions on this particular project?
This wouldn't, this wouldn't commit to that at all, 'cause it's a garage under it.
It's, pardon me, Ted?
At, at the garage, the garage, the eave for the garages is a lot more than 12 feet.
Okay.
It wouldn't apply.
So in your, in your opinion?
But the square footage is less, right? The square footage?
Yeah, yeah.
Be under the code.
He's under the code requirements?
The square footage.
Yeah, the square footage, yeah.
For the garage. My only concern is the garage.
What's your question about the garage? Without the apartment, you're talking about, Bob?
No, with the apartment, is this situation for this garage being added fall in the realm of what's required, or is it over what's required?
Well, garage is only permitted to be 18 feet high. This is 26. The size of the garage, you're gonna have a three-car garage, if, if you can meet the lot coverage and building coverage.
Right, but with an apartment above it?
No, no, that, no, no, this is a single-family zone.
Okay, so this is something new. Is that not correct in the area?
For a new structure, yes.
Yes. That's all I have at the moment, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Capoli. Uh, next up, we will go to Ms. Dietz.
Thank you very much. I just had a question. I heard referenced a few times about having the, the apartment only be as an annual rental, as opposed to weekly or monthly. And it didn't sound to me that that was part of the original application, and I just wanna make sure, while we're having discussions about it, that that would become part of the application or have that caveat in there, that it would only be allowed as, as an annual rental.
That's a great pickup, Mrs. Dietz. Often we'll ask the applicant if they're willing to make it a condition of the application to have that deed restricted to annual rentals. I think that's the question you're asking, and that question would go to Mr. Shipers and Mr. Almeida.
My, my client is, is considering, we, you know, my impression was, it would be potentially favorable. He just wants to think about it a little bit as we go through the balance of the questions. And if I could report back to you, I'd, I'd like to also request or reserve an opportunity to speak towards Mr. Capoli's concerns at the end of the question.
Certainly. Uh, so Ms. Dietz will come back to, or we, we won't let that question go before we place our votes. Do you have more questions for the applicant?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, uh, so next up, we'll go to Mr. Palmizzano.
Anything that I was gonna ask, they've already asked, so I'm, I'm satisfied with everything that was said.
Thank you, Mr. Palmizzano, and Mr. Zenovich.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. Um, I do have some questions, or just some things I'd like to talk about. I wanted to say, I did agree, I think, that expanding that three feet to five feet on the east side of the garage is definitely needed. Um, I thought, I'd like to also agree with the concerns that Mr. Capoli raised regarding the, I guess, a, a new structure being built with this garage and the apartment, that I share the same concern that this lot, I mean, you've kind of fully built out the lot, the beautiful home, four bedrooms, plus the one bedroom above the, or in the apartment. It doesn't, the parking situation seems problematic to me. It doesn't seem that you have enough parking for all those bedrooms. And then that apartment also doesn't have any outdoor space at all. What was the square footage on this apartment?
Uh, Mr. Peterson, if you're still there?
I'm here.
I guess...
So, uh, Mr. uh, Ms. Zenovich, I believe Mr. Peterson's looking for that answer. Just, just to let you know, we have a question section and then a comment section, so we usually reserve this spot for any questions that you have. And then we'll come back around to everybody after we open it up to public comment for board comments as well. So you will get a chance to speak on your feelings of the application, because this spot is, is best used for questions.
Okay, thanks. Um, so the trees that are along D Street are all, like, up in the wires? Is there any plan to prune those or take care of those trees? Because they're getting pretty large, and they're all up in the wires?
I guess we can request the public works to trim them. They're the, they're the borough's trees, they're not our trees. So we, we can put a request in to do some maintenance on those trees to make sure they don't affect the wires.
So they're the homeowner's responsibilities. Tree trees are the homeowner's responsibility.
The ones between the curb and sidewalk?
Yes.
Okay. Then I guess the question is of the applicant.
We will do whatever is necessary to protect the trees, remove the trees, do whatever is good with the trees. And whoever at the borough wants to tell us what to do with the trees, we'll do with the trees.
Uh, I'll go ahead and weigh in on that square footage also that you asked. So the, including the exterior walls and the stairwell, we're right around 600 square feet from a building code standpoint, which I know you guys don't care as much about, but I would have, I would subtract a part of the stairwell off of there, so something under 600 square feet. So it's not a, it's not a big space.
So, and the attic space is, I, I know you said that that's gonna be unfinished, but is the height in there enough for that to become finished at some point?
It is, yes. So it's, it's a, it's a typical, it could be habitable attic. Right now, you know, there's no plan on doing that, but it, it could be, yes. So if you take a look at the front elevation on the architectural of the, uh, the main residence. Oh, yes, perfect. You know, you take a look at those two front windows there, the, the height of a window, the top of windows about six foot six, so maybe that, you know, that first line down is, well, that's my height. Most people are taller than me, you know. So you've got a space down the middle that you can stand in, but it's a typical attic. So, you know, the walls slope down on either side. It's not a third floor. It's, in, in building code, we call it a habitable attic. You guys call it a half-story. And it complies with your, even though it's not being finished, we comply anyway with your requirements for what's the most that you can have up there.
Oh, and I think, and I think it was Mr. Hutchinson, maybe, who talked about the stair, the existing stairs that are on 10th that I think are on the other property. It looks like they're on the other property line, but I'm looking at the site plan. Is that correct? And that sidewalk from those stairs, those existing stairs, they're gonna stay there?
So the existing sidewalk, if we go back to page number two, April, at the bottom of the sheet, you see the crosshatching that runs along the sidewalk on page two. Can you see that?
Oh, yes.
That is the removal portion of our sidewalk. The other half is still on the property to the east, to remain. So half of the stairs and half of the sidewalk will remain, but our half will go away.
Okay.
There still will be a sidewalk from the street for that lot to the back, but our half is coming out with our fence. We're putting a fence along that line.
And do you know the width of what that exist, what that sidewalk will be after?
I believe it's three feet.
Excuse me, thank you.
And we did check. There is no, uh, there's no easement rights for that sidewalk from either lot to cross over. It's just a sidewalk that was built. I'm guessing those homes were built by the same builder at the same era, and they put a sidewalk in, but there was never any agreements or easements relative to that sidewalk.
Okay. I don't, I don't think I have any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We can always come back to you if you have any more. That leaves me. And I guess I have a couple of questions that are gonna follow on with Mr. Capoli's theme with the accessory dwelling. And I guess I would, I would ask that, Mr. DeFalco, you, you said there was no negative criteria associated with this building that you could see. How does that weigh in with the master plan and the fact that we're deviating from the master plan on an accessory dwelling? I mean, is that, is that acceptable?
Yeah, I mean, the fact that this is a pre-existing non-conforming use, so it predates your ordinance. So the master plan was written, this being in place, call it grandfathered, call it whatever you wanna call it, two-bedroom, I mean, a two-family use on this lot is legal. It's allowed. The fact that it's zoned, single-family, doesn't change the fact that this is a legal two-family use on the property. So in my opinion, modifying that to make it two separate buildings, still keeping it two-family use, is not a new use to the, to the area. It was always there before there was even an ordinance. So we're not making anything, we're not adding a new use to the property. It's been there. It's, it's, it's like a fixture of Belmar. It's legal. Two families on this lot is what is there and what's permitted. How we broke it out to be more aesthetic and better for the neighborhood does not cause significant detriment to the zone plan, and that's my opinion on that.
Thank you. Wouldn't that ordinance then, isn't that ordinance designed to eliminate two-family dwellings on lots in this area? If it's not allowed, you said it was grandfathered, as it is, is existing, but if you were to modify this structure, it's not permitted, is that right? And, and it would be my opinion that the ordinance is written that way to eliminate these secondary structures, uh, second accessory dwellings.
Well, we don't have...
Once you tear them down, once you tear them down, you lose what you have.
Understood. But we think this is a better plan than what's there today. So we're trying to show the board that by maintaining a two-family use on a property in a different configuration is better than the, the building that is there today with the two rentals. It's a better benefit for the town aesthetically. It's a better tax ratable, and you get a less intense use because you have less population potential.
I think you'd have even less potential for population density if you eliminated that second apartment.
Well, obviously, that's always the case, right?
Yeah, and aesthetically, if this property were improved without an apartment, it's still the same, right? The same, the benefit to the town?
It doesn't change it in one way, if, if nothing's done, you're saying?
The design, yeah. It's a very well-thought-out plan, and, and I do think it's gonna be improvement to the neighborhood. But, but I don't think we need that secondary structure, or the accessory building, to improve that.
No, but it gets to, when, when the applicant purchased the land, it was a two-family dwelling, which has a certain value, which you could understand. It has a value of rental income. And he likes the lot. He likes the corner. He wants to live there as the primary tenant here. Not a rental, but a homeowner. But he still desires to have rental income to make the logistics of this all come together. He's putting a lot of money into this dwelling, and to have a small, one-bedroom apartment as, as a way to make this all happen is what the applicant is trying to put together here. If it was just the home by itself, I don't think he would go through this. I think he does wanna get that additional income to make this possible and, and benefit the borough. So that's, that's the, uh, the rationale of, of the thought process that goes into it. We could stay as a two-bedroom, I mean, a two-family rental the way it is. Not the intent of...
Thank, thank you. Um, I, I guess my question is to Mr. Shipers or Mr. Almeida. I mean, would you consider eliminating this garage apartment in exchange for the approval of what you're asking? I mean, you're, you're asking for a height variance in the back corner of the property for this garage apartment and the secondary dwelling?
No, they are not willing to eliminate that, but that's what I wanted to be heard on, in particular. And maybe we could have a little discourse and circle back if I might speak.
Oh, please, go ahead, Mr. Shipers.
So, um, Mr. Capoli and Mr. Lisco in particular, but board members also inclusive. Well, Mr. Capoli, this neighborhood may not have had the situation where you have a, a, a two-family, non-conforming singular structure, in my opinion, that needs to go. Uh, we have over the course of time, and I think probably during both of your tenure, have had the following come before the board that was in fact granted. We had, and then I'm gonna talk about my theory and a little planning. We've had applicants who've had terrible front homes and terrible back homes. Now, we've come before the board, and we said they want to modernize slightly enlarged, somewhat enlarged, and make the, the principal residence gorgeous, respectable, and beautiful, and in so doing, still preserve the second non-conforming apartment use. You had the two uses, but they were two different structures on the same property. We've approved those. If I have to do a data search, or if I wind up carrying this, I'll come back with the data. But, but here is what you, what you have, and I think you have to think, you, you need a bit of forward thinking here. Because what's going to happen, and, and I've made these arguments previously, Mr. Lisco, to you. If, if you turn a blind's eye to people who are looking to come in, who are existing residents, who wanna improve what they have, but simply the impediment is the expansion of a use of, of, of two homes as, as the bar, you will shut it down. Mr. Capoli, if you want none, no other people with a lousy back house that's rented and a lousy front house who wanna maintain or need to maintain that income, and you're not gonna allow them to potentially expand when they're, when they're beautifying, you're gonna lock it down. Now, maybe the ordinance may, may need to be addressed, but that's what you're here for. You're here to view these, these projects one at a time in specificity to determine whether a, a better zoning alternative is going to exist by the applicant's application. If, if this board takes the mindset, no, we're not gonna allow you to, to be creative. And that's what's shown by Mr. Peterson and Mr. DeFalco and Almeida there. Creativity to make this work. If you're not gonna give people the opportunity to make it work, you're gonna have the same old Belmar decades into the future as we're trying to, to still find ways to renovate or move these existing structures. If you think just by time, people are gonna give up two-family uses, knock them down and build a single-family home, it's gonna be slow hoeing and slow sledding. And I don't think that's what you wanna encourage, Mr. Lisco. Mr. Capoli, I implore you to think back of your time on the board where we've looked at it the same way. We've had two separate structures. We've improved them both. We improved the neighborhood, and they were beautiful projects once completed, and we didn't let, let this issue of use expansion stop that. And this is not a tremendous use expansion. This is, this is language that we're interpreting. It's, it's a plan, but it's a language we're interpreting. You are the boots on the ground. You will be our beacon, and we're gonna rely, and people are gonna rely upon... You are the boots on the ground, you will be our beacon, and we're going to rely and people are going to rely upon, uh, your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shipers. Uh, let's see, we're going to open it up to public comment, but we had two other issues to address. Uh, first was Mr. Ross's parking issues. Did, did everything get solved on that?
Well, I think the question was, uh, whether, whether the, the ribbon space is a legal space or not. I think if we need a variance, request it to be legal, we would ask for that variance.
And so what would the variance be? Five required?
Well, five required, and we have two in the garage and one ribbon. And, and we do have, you know, there's an area of 24 feet in front of the garage doors. I mean, practicality, because it's going to be a car in front of each door and a car in the garage. That's four, a ribbon is five, so we can fit them on the site. We showed three. If we need to show five, and if one's a variance because of its location or orientation or dimension, we need to ask for that dimensional variance for the width across the front of the garage greater than-
If I could, uh, thanks, if I could just jump in, Ted, what would the, uh, just so that the record's straight and that the resolution will be straight. So what would we be saying? Five is required and technically how many are proposed?
Well, without the ribbon, we need a parking variance. If you permit the ribbon and expand the driveway, you don't need a parking variance.
Was that what, you got what you needed there, Mr. Cuddy?
Yes, I did, thank you.
Okay, great. And I think there was a second issue, uh, that was back to Mr. Almeida about the deed restriction.
Mr. Chairman, before you change the parking, um, question-
Go ahead, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Could we get some clarity on, on whether we're going to do the four configuration and not allow alongside, or we're going to allow alongside, therefore, five spots are getting approved? Because, you know, I, I'm hearing, like, you guys could go either way, but if we're going to head to public comments and also to a vote, I'd like clarity on what the applicants are proposing, and, 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 and then we could either agree with it or push back and say, you know, we'd like to go the opposite. So, um, is it, is it two in the garage and two in front, and you're going to ask for a variance, a parking variance where five is required, and you're showing a plan that has four? Or are you going to say, we have five spots, but we need a variance for parking alongside the garage?
I believe the latter. We're going to ask for the four plus the one on the side, and that's the variant for the one on the side of the garage.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. All right, and I think, uh, if there was anything else, we're back to Mr. Shipers and Mr. Almeida.
John, I had one additional question. I'll wait till-
Sure, we'll come back to you. And Mr. Z, uh, Mr. Zenovich, did, um, did you have more questions? I'm going to, I'm going to keep messing that name up until you tell me how to pronounce it the right way.
No problem. Uh, no, I, I don't think that I have a question.
Okay.
Got a question. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, I'd, I'd like the clarification on the yearly rental. Um, I'd like to make that, uh, a condition of the application that if the apartment is rented, if it's approved, that it's a yearly rental.
Okay, we're asking the applicant if they're going to agree to that right now.
Clarify, Mr. Ross, I, I think Mr. Almeida does, um, I may just need a couple of minutes with him to make sure he understands what a deed restriction is on a, uh, annual rental basis.
Okay, could I offer, uh, Mr. Ross has a couple more questions, or at least one. Uh, and then maybe we take a five-minute break, you can answer that question for us during the break, and then we'll come back and hit, uh, public questions.
Thank you.
All right, so Mr. Ross, you want to go ahead with your questions?
Yeah, this might just be clarification. I might not, I might have missed this early on, but normally we, uh, talk about the current condition of the existing, um, apartments, I guess. Are they currently being rented out? Did, did you state that?
They are not.
They're not being rented out?
Have, have, have maintained the property and improved upon it in the last year and a half since owning it, while not renting them, uh, specifically during this timeframe to not imbe the burden on our neighbors and also the township.
Right, but previous to you, they had certificates of occupancy for, um, to be rented out, and, um-
Yes, certificate of occupancy per level is six persons.
Yeah, and, and I thought I heard testimony, they were two-bedroom, each, each apartment was two-bedroom, one bath, is that correct?
They are mirror images of each other up and down.
Okay, so CO was for six each, 12 total. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to get that clarified, clarified.
Okay, uh, unless anybody has any other questions, why don't we take a quick break? The time is, uh, 8:18. Let's meet at 8:30. That's 12 minutes. Is that enough time, Mr. Shipers?
Yes.
Great.
Okay, we're back on for recording, and it looks like everyone is still here.
Great, thanks, April. Do we, don't need to take a roll call, do we?
I think we should.
All right.
If you don't mind.
All right, Mr. Capoli, catch him in the middle of drinking. Here?
Wave, yes, I'm here.
Ms. Dietz?
Here.
Mr. Palmasano? He's on mute. I muted everybody on break.
Uh, here.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Here.
Mr. Malango?
Here.
Mr. Trezenovich?
Here.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Here.
Mr. Lisco?
Here.
And Mr. Ross?
Here.
All right, uh, Mr. Shipers, we're back to you. Oh, you're still on mute. Mr. Shipers, can you hear us? You're on mute. That's it, yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my client would de-restrict the property on an annual basis, rental basis.
Okay, thank you for making that a condition of the application. Uh, we're going to go to public comment next, uh, or public questions. Did anyone from the board have any more questions? All right, seeing none, we'll open it up to the pu, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Capoli.
I have some more questions, and I could probably hold them until after the, uh, public comment, and am I, is it okay to do that?
Yeah, it'd be better to get your questions out now, though, I think.
Okay. My question was to Mr. Shiper, in reference to that we had approved other situations where the back house was renovated and all of that, and I, I, he's probably right. But those are old structures. They weren't new structures. Um, and yes, he's right. We would always try, want to help someone in those situations to improve it and make it better. But they were existing structures. That was the only other comment that I had to make.
All right, thank you. All right, I, I don't think there's any more questions. If I'm wrong, somebody raise your hand. Uh, but with that, why don't we hand it to, over to April to run the public portion?
And April, if you wouldn't mind, just, uh, read your email again if, uh, if someone's having a problem having access.
It's clerk@belmar.com. All right, so, um, anyone from the public that wants to speak, uh, just remember to state your name and address first, please. Yeah, Linda's up.
I'm going to turn this over to Greg Glezman, who's, and then I'd like to speak after he does. Greg?
Uh, good evening, Greg Glezman, 409 10th Avenue. That puts me about four houses down, um, from the corner.
You know what, excuse me, I'm, uh, I'm Kevin, the board attorney. I'm just going to swear you in if you don't mind. If you could just spell your last name, please?
Certainly, G.L.E.Z.M.A.N.
All right, good evening and welcome to the Belmar zoning board. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide any, will be the truth, the best you know, to help you guide?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are we all set?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, uh, so, so I would just like to voice my support for this application. Um, it, it's a bit of an understatement to say that existing structure is not very attractive, and that the proposed structure is, is a significant improvement. In fact, I think it would be a significant improvement to the entire neighborhood. Um, given that the property is already currently two-family, um, personally, I have no problem with, um, the, the, uh, small apartment over the garage. And that's really all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gleisman. Next up, I think, was Ms. Sharkis?
Yes, Linda Sharkis, Fourth Avenue.
All right, good evening and happy new year to you. Uh, if you-
Thank you.
Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide any, will be the truth, the best you know, to help you guide?
I do.
Thank you.
So I want to start and say, Mr. Peterson, you did a spectacular job on creating very attractive plans for this site. It would be an asset to the corner, and I see it as a win-win for both the owner or Tony and his family, as well as the neighborhood. Unlike some of the board members, I see this as reducing the non-conformity. We're go, you're going from potential 12 people in the property to a four-bedroom house and one garage apartment with one or two, at, with the size of it, you would only think it would be, have one person in the apartment. Even if it was two, it's still a lot less, um, of, of concentration. And, you know, in terms of things that have been done in the, the past, just at the end of last year, you approved, um, a house on 14th Avenue, which was a non-conforming lot with three houses. You allowed one to stay, they took down one, and then were able to build another one. These are the kind of decisions that create conflict, but for me, I look at this, um, as being a great application. And, um, when we talk about parking, it becomes such a big, big issue in these zoning board meetings, but as I walk around town, I see people putting fences up that preclude them from using the allotted parking spaces on their property, the required parking spaces for parking. So I think what, even if Mr. Almeida doesn't get five parking spaces, he's still better off having a, a side-by-side, which by the way, you approved for that 14th Avenue house, which works for, for me in terms of beautifying the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sharkis.
Go ahead, Jean.
April?
Yep, go ahead, Jean.
Eugene Kramer, Fourth Avenue.
Hello, good evening, and, uh, do you, uh, this is Kevin, board attorney. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide any, will be the truth, the best you know, to help you guide?
Um, I do.
Thank you.
Okay, I, I only have a question. I look, I took a look at the plans, and, um, my question is, how many swimming pool gates are proposed? I guess that, that, that question is for, for the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Kramer, Mr. Shipers, here. I think I am going to ask either Mr. DeFalco or Mr. Peterson to respond as to what code will require and/or what they are proposing.
Mr. DeFalco, you're on mute.
There we go, sorry about that.
Thank you.
Was the question, how many swimming pool gates are there?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, I believe there's one. And, and the access from the house, which will be a door. But that would be alarmed door.
Okay, uh, I guess my concern about that was, um, i- if, if the, um, principal structure occupant parks in the parking area, do they have to go through the fenced-in, uh, swimming pool?
They have to go either into that gate, get there, or out to the public sidewalk and walk to the main entrance, which is on D Street. You see the, if you have a plan there, there's a, an upgraded entrance to the side of the building which faces D. They can walk either on the public sidewalk without going in the gate, or they can walk through the gate.
Okay, so, uh, the homeowner, in other words, would have to, uh, I, I guess that would be some sort of activated gate, in order to go from where they park their car into the principal structure. My, the other thing that I did not see on the plans is their closure of that fenced-in area, uh, behind the garage.
I'm not sure I understand Mr. Kramer's question as counsel. What do you mean by closed in, Mr. Kramer?
Is there a, is, is, excuse me, is there a four-foot fence, um, at the back of the, uh, garage, uh, to the property line?
There was supposed to be a fence there, right?
Yeah, I don't see it, but there should be one by the shower. That corner of the garage should be connected to the fence at the property line. And as, as we move the garage further away, it'll be five foot long and four foot high. We'll add that fence in there.
Yeah, will that have a, a locked gate?
I, that's up to the applicant. I don't think we need another gate, but it's up to the applicant.
Yeah, well, well, it's access to the property behind the garage and, uh, that where the property owner already has, uh, uh, a, I, I believe a vinyl fence, about a six footer. So that, so then there would be, uh, two gates. Uh, what, what sort of gate, uh, like I said, uh, upward the main entrance there is from the parking area, uh, what, what sort of, uh, gate would that be?
You mean the size of it, the, the locking mechanism, uh? It'll be a, it'll be a self-closing locking pool code gate.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Anyone else from the public?
Hold on one sec. Go ahead, Len.
Hi, this is Len Cannarozzi, 107 and a half, 16th Avenue.
Good evening. If you could just spell your last name, please? All right, good evening and welcome to the Belmar zoning board. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide any, will be the truth, the best of your knowledge, to help you guide?
I do.
Thank you very much.
So I have a question or a few questions. Uh, the first one is about the sidewalk. How exactly is the sidewalk or half the sidewalk eliminated? And will the remaining sidewalk be left in satisfactory condition? Sidewalk between the two properties?
Yeah, I can answer that question. I believe the, uh, the contractor will use a, a circular diamond bit saw cutting concrete saw and slice along the property line and remove the half that's on the applicant's property without touching the sidewalk that's on the adjacent property.
Okay, thank you. Um, it looks like on Google Earth, on the southern border of that property, there are- It looks like on Google Earth, on the southern border of that property, there are trees. Are those coming out, or do they, who do they belong to? Where the garage is going?
The applicant, Mr. Chairman, indicates it's his intention to remove those trees. He thinks they're of relatively poor condition.
And I'm sorry, which trees were those, Bill?
On the southerly borderline, which would be adjacent to the garage and the parking strips that we all talked about.
Thank you. And then a comment that I had regarding the fence that faces the other home. The corner of that fence looks like it's right on the corner of the entryway for the other property. My comment would be, if we could move that fence back, I think it would be better for those people, those occupants of the other house.
You're talking, what fence?
The corner, the new fence, the corner of the fence where the air conditioning units are.
Right. We're allowed to certainly fence, really, even to the front of the home. What's your objection with it only midway?
I think that the people coming out of that home, that is the main entrance of the other home, is that correct?
I believe it is, yes.
So if I lived there, I wouldn't like walking into a fenced.
Well, it's not, they pulled it back past that entry deck right there. They pulled it so it is unobstructed, but with due respect, sir, you may be fostering almost an easement or an adverse possession type of an argument where those people would cross my client's property or circle in and out to get to their sidewalk. We've had, I've had these type of conditions within the town. They get ugly quickly, but I think my client's been fair by pulling it back to where he has it.
Okay, that's just my opinion. My last, my last comment is, I agree with Mr. Coppola regarding the fact that the other variances were on homes that already existed, two homes that already existed. But I agree with Mr. Shiper that I think in this case, we should be creative to allow this project to go through, because it looks like it's going to be a spectacular home that will make the town of Belmar much better. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cannarozzi. Anyone else from the public?
Linda wanted to come back.
Hello again. And I just want to make a comment. If you don't, I guess the question that needs to be asked is, what are we left with if this application isn't approved? I mean, it is, the current situation is so unattractive, and if we don't, if we're not granted the variances to do this project, I can't imagine anybody taking it on or making it any better with what's currently there. I mean, two doors down, there's two houses on the property. His garage in the back is smaller than the rear structure on 415 10th Avenue. So, you know, in terms of sightlines, he's just creating a better street view that camouflages what decrepit building on 415. So I just can't imagine us giving this opportunity for a beautiful, updated building that you wouldn't, you know, approve this. As variant, I think there's so many attributes here that Mr. Shipers has already alluded to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sharkis.
And that was it.
All right, with that, we'll close the public portion. We're going to go back out to board comment. We'll start with Mr. Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have to say, originally going into this application, I was, I was kind of like, hell no. I'm like, you know, for the reasons Bob cited. You know, we're going to build and allow a new garage apartment. I mean, are you kidding me, right? That's where I started from. But after we went through all the details, I think the applicant was more than fair in agreeing to add two more feet, so go from three feet to five feet behind the garage. The agreement that it's going to be a year-round rental and not a seasonal rental deals with the potential risk to the neighborhood of it becoming a seasonal animal house. And I think that that issue has been agreed upon and has been put to rest. I don't think we can debate the fact that it's going to be a less intense use than what will currently exist with the two-family horrible-looking structure. The parking is going to be improved, aesthetics are going to be improved. This is a high-visibility location in the town. You know, we all go by it every day, and I can't tell you how many times I've looked at that and said how horrible it was. I saw one up for sale, and I, you know, I was just hoping somebody who ever bought it was going to actually do something to fix it, because it is such an eyesore. So, you know, I understand that the master plan, you know, that there are some aspects of the master plan that we have to take into account, but the larger view of the master plan is we need to improve the town, right? We need to take the old dilapidated structures and either renovate or knock them down and put new structures up. And if we don't approve this, as Ms. Sharkis indicated, how long will that building remain in its current state and perhaps never get any additional investment put to it? So, you know, all in all, and the new board members will come to hear the term about, you know, weighing the positive criteria against the negative criteria, because it's not always going to be an easy decision. And you guys are starting with a tough case, I got to tell you. But in my mind, the positive criteria far outweighs the negative criteria, and I've really come around 180 on this, and I'm feeling like, like, we got to let this happen.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Next up is Mr. Malengo.
Don't worry, I didn't fall asleep. Okay, so I would like to say that this application, the applicant, I think, took good measures to make this fit into the neighborhood. I don't think he went too far over the square footage for this apartment above the garage. I think he kept it modest. I think it's going to be, the benefits to this application definitely outweigh any detriments, and I would be in favor of this application at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Malengo. We're up to Mr. Ross.
Yeah, I would agree with Mr. Fitzgerald and Mr. Malengo. Made some notes here. Currently, we've got two rental units, occupancy, six each. Is it conforming to the master plan? I would say probably not. Is it going in the right direction to support the master plan and making the situation better? I think most definitely. If you look at the use, I think Ms. Sharkis talked about it. It's a 600-square-foot apartment. We've approved the walk-in closets on that, on this board about that size, to be honest with you. So, you know, the clientele would probably be a young professional that wants to live in Belmar. And, you know, I think to make this a reality for the applicant, he's invested a huge amount of money in this property, I'm sure. And the alternative would be, anybody else would probably keep it as a multi-use front house, to be honest. So if we're holding out for the single-family home and that's it, I don't know as if that's coming, if this is disapproved. And I do want to make one more comment, because this never sets a precedent. And, you know, Mr. Coppoli talked about, you know, have we ever approved these in the past? I know at least two on Ocean Avenue, since I've been on the board, where we've had now livable space above garages that have been new structures. And they each had their own different situation that allowed for it, that made sense. And this has its own situation that makes sense. So that's just my opinion. I think by far, the positive criteria outweighs the negative criteria. We've reduced some of the areas of impervious coverage and some of the other items that normally require variances when we have homes like this. And so I'd be in favor of the application.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Mr. Hutchison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have to agree with my previous board member's comments. I think the improvement to this particular piece of property far, far outweighs the situation if it was left to be the way it is, because I think it would probably attract somebody who would want this as a cash cow and not improve it and just keep it to rentals, be able to stuff a bunch of people in there and walk away with a little bit of change. I also feel like, I guess I'm in the minority, but I really think part of Belmar's charm is it does have backhouses. Maybe that's because I have one. And that's the way I was able to afford to live in this, in this town 24 years ago. So I am partial to that. I think it's been improved, as has been stated before, a potential rental of 12 people down to a potential rental of one or two. And I think that's significant. The front house being a primary resident for the, for the property owner, I think, makes it probably imperative that the people who rent that back property will not be coming before the, for the town as an animal house. So I'm in favor of the application. I think it's aesthetically a wonderful improvement, and I'm looking forward to seeing it and not seeing that boxy thing that's on 10th Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchison. Mr. Coppoli.
As you know, there's another property next door exactly like it. That means somebody's going to buy that property and put another back house there, and so on and so forth. Are we setting a precedence? Maybe, maybe not. I think about a lot of our ordinances about two-family homes, backhouses, and I'm not comfortable with it. I hate to disagree with my colleagues, but at this time, I do. And I would not approve this application. That's all I have, Mr. Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Coppoli. Mr., I'm sorry, Ms. Dietz.
Thank you. So I think that I'm hearing the changes that have been made, and the applicant has been very amenable to all of the suggestions that have been made from the board members. And I do think that looking at what would be going up and bringing down the number of people on that property from the two zones, excuse me, the two, I don't know what it's called, the double housing to the single, would definitely be an improvement. It certainly would be an improvement to the neighborhood to have that single residence. And really, for me, reassuring us that it would be an annual rental, I think, went a long way for me to see the benefit of this, outweighing some of the drawbacks. So at this time, I would be in favor of the applicant.
Thank you, Ms. Dietz. Mr. Pomisano.
I think it's going to be an improvement for the neighborhood, and I like everything that was said, and I'm in favor of the application.
Thank you. Ms. Drzenovich.
I share Mr. Coppoli's concerns about the garage apartment. I also think that, even though that apartment may only just be for one person with the large house of four bedrooms, possibly five, should the attic get completed? And then nearly the entire lot is covered. I realize the pavers are counted as the 50% towards the pervious or impervious coverage. I feel like it's a lot going on, on this lot, and I am very appreciative of the homeowners' compromise and interest in trying to move things forward with the changes that he's talked about agreeing to. I would not be in favor of supporting the garage apartment and that, that portion of the application.
Thank you. I am always amazed, when it comes down to it, how difficult some of these decisions are. I thought for sure this was a definite no. Then we hear the application. I'm not in favor of this application, because it deviates so far from the master plan, tearing down a two-family and then reconstructing that second dwelling in a new location. Yes, we've approved renovations in front and back houses, but none of those were new constructions that I'm aware of. I like, I like to think my forward thinking goes a little beyond this application, because what we're approving runs with the, with the property. And I think it, even though we say it doesn't set precedent, we heard Mr. Shipers claim that these were done all over the town, that it's acceptable to do this. And I do think approving this as a rear garage apartment is not in the best interest of Belmar. I would love to see this property improved exactly as it was proposed, without that rear garage apartment. For those reasons, I'm not in favor of the application. At this point, we would move to vote, but I will offer Mr. Shipers the opportunity to consider the board comments and decide whether or not to move forward with the vote.
Who are the seven voting, who are the two working?
Yeah, it's Mr. Coppoli, Mr. Fitzgerald, Mr. Malengo, Ms. Dietz, Mr. Ross, Mr. Hutchison, and myself.
Then we call for the vote.
Okay. All right, Mr. Kennedy, will you summarize, please?
Sure. And again, I echo Mr. Fitzgerald's comments to the new board members, welcome aboard. And this is why I think you're going to love it, and I think you see the intense topics and discussions that we have. And just by way, very, very, very brief review, because we have a lot of it tonight, but just so that you all know, on a use variance application, there's a couple of special rules. The first rule is that in order to win or to get approval, the applicant needs five affirmative yes votes. Most other situations, majority vote wins, but in a use variance application, which this is, the applicant needs five affirmative yes votes. And then the other issue is to be aware of that April only seven people vote. So, Mr. Chairman, knowing we've got a wide range of opinions, some of the conditions that I took note of are potential conditions of approval, would be obviously compliance with all the promises and commitments and representations the applicant's development team made tonight. And to the new board members, we say that in case I forgot something. That's my nice way of saying, if they said it during the planning board or zoning board meeting, it counts. So, two, we had talked about a deed restriction for annual rental, and we talked about that a lot, and number, just a couple of things about that. Just a couple of new laws about that, and sometimes some of these restrictions are viewed as being anti-rental. And the court is very clear, that the courts are very clear, that we can't be anti-rental in terms of, we've all rented, we've all had to rent, we've all will rent, and so we can't classify and make distinctions between renters versus owners and so on, and we're not doing that here. I think it's very clear that what you're saying is, if it's going to be rented, do it on an annual basis so that there's a less transient impact in this context of this use variance application. So then we also had Mr. Chairman's, we didn't say this, but I wrote this down, and let me ask about this. Would there be a need, and I would ask this to the board members and the applicants, and Mr. Shipers, that there would be some sort of deed restriction also, that the front building, the two-family use could be abandoned from that building use? I think, Bill, that was implicit. Use, I think, Bill, that was implicit throughout your argument, but the two-family use associated, the pre-existing non-conforming two-family use associated with that front structure would be abandoned in favor if this application is approved.
Correct.
Okay. And then let's see. We had the pavers will be pervious pavers. Now, we had talked about along D Street, four-way stop sign. Was there something about petitioning the Borough Council to allow on-street parking or is was that something, Mr. Chairman, or did I just get my notes confused?
I think I think it was mentioned, but I think that's a emergency vehicle lane. So yeah, I don't imagine that's part of the application.
And then is there anything out of the outdoor shower? Do we need to say that's got to tie into something, Ted? Or is that?
No, it can be. It's called a ridge station, doesn't have to have a drain.
Okay. And then we have our typical particularly board members. We have a typical shelf like saying people have to get the permits or CBOs within two years when they agreed upon extension, grading and drainage details to be worked out to the borough engineer. Okay, we had air conditioning condensers located in his only compliant location. Now, we talked about and Mr. Fitzgerald, this was your very good idea. Let me make sure I have it correct. And again, ladies and gentlemen, the reason I'm hesitating is I have hard time reading my own writing, so that that's my my problem. But Mark, we had said something about putting the eastern wall of the garage, increasing that setback from three feet to five feet, so as to give more breathing room for the neighbor and better for access and safety purposes. Is that accurate? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. And then, Mr. Chairman, was there some discussion about the need to re calc- recalculate the lot coverage or did I just hear that wrong?
I think Mr. DeFalco offered to recalculate it because that grass strip underneath the parking spot to the side of the garage does not count as impervious space.
Okay.
And and if I could jump in real quick, so we'll recalculate that and we were going to seek a variance for that fifth space, the way it's oriented, and that variance should include any additional impervious that that ribbon is going to generate at this point.
Okay, now, do you know, have an idea as to how much, excuse me, as to how much you're increasing the impervious coverage?
It's about 20 by 20 by four, about 80 feet. 80 feet divided by 7500, not much.
Rich, aren't you also picking up more impervious when you follow Mr. Fitzgerald's request by picking up another two feet by 26 across the back of the garage as well as eliminating some of the depth when you slide it five feet?
Right, we're gonna lose, we're gonna lose impervious in front of the garage and we're gonna increase impervious on the ribbon. So it's not going to be a complete wash, but it won't be it won't be it. It'll be about half that grass strip, basically. I'm thinking half the grass strip will be impervious, which is like less than 1%. It's a fraction of a percent.
So you you think what what you're asking for, you're within 1%, 1% minus or 1% plus or minus?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. And then we had, Mr. Chairman, was there something about introducing landscaping, introducing a landscaping island in front of the door to separate the driveways? Was that, we talked about the ribbon driveway separated by landscaping or is that?
I think we mentioned it. I don't think the applicant agreed to it and then asked for the variance for the driveway to be designed as it was. Am I correct on that?
I think you're correct. And by moving the building two feet further to the north toward D Street, it would become maybe a little bit cumbersome by moving the garage into that traveled area. So best that we don't take away the pavers at that one point.
Rich, you're not moving the building north, you're moving the building west, aren't you?
Well, yeah, I'm looking at the north, it's the west arrow, I guess, yeah, towards D Street.
Okay. And, Mr. Chairman, I think now this goes a little bit.
Really putting me on the spot here, Ken.
I know. I I I I put you on the spot because I know you can handle. We talked about making the that ribbon spot a more functional parking spot. I mean, do I need to clarify that?
I don't think so. With, and I would defer to Mr. DeFalco, but I I think almost as designed with the rear structure moving to the west towards towards D Street, that that side side parking spot is just find a way it is.
Okay, thank you. As is typically the case, but particularly in use variance applications, we say that the landscaping that's being represented has to be basically perpetually planted, replaced and and maintained as necessary, just it always stays. Bill, I had and maybe I heard this, in terms of the garage height, I think I'd seen the plans that said 24 foot, but someone said 26 feet, just so that we're on the same page. The height of the garage is, maybe that's for Rich.
I I heard the same thing. It's a good clarification. I thought it was 24, but I'll defer to Richard Tom.
Tom, I think is the answer. I've got 24 in my plan. I think I got that from Tom.
Hold on.
We'll come back to that in a minute. In terms of the the deed restriction that we talked about for the the rental, I just, Mr. Chairman, I was remiss not to say this earlier. That is an important property, right, which is being surrendered. So that's why I'm glad that the applicant is doing this freely and has had the opportunity to to speak with his attorney, particularly offline, because you never want people committing to things that they don't fully understand. So thank you, Bill, for taking the time out to explain that. And then I think we had talked about and I guess in terms of that deed restriction about the annual rentals, Mr. Shipers and I will work about, figure out how we memorialize that in terms of how we enforce it. I think that's a conversation that Mr. Shipers and I can have offline if the application gets approved. And then the other final conditions were, I think we had a condition that they prune the large trees that are up in the wires right now. And I would assume we'd say, do that within 90 days or any agreed upon extension. Does that sound fairly reasonable?
That's fairly reasonable. I the board member, Ms. D, I she's, I don't know her full last name.
Zinovich. I got it now.
Excuse me for that. She may know more, Kevin, than I do about whether, I think we have a shade tree commissioner, do we not have one anymore? Because I know, I know from prior history, sometimes when we try to, the shade commission said we have to be involved and other times they said they didn't want to be involved.
Okay, then why don't we, if it's acceptable to the board members, particularly Mr. Zinovich, we can say, you know, working with the shade tree commission to A, see if it's possible and you just do it within 90 days or any agreed upon extension and just, Bill, either way, you report back to April so that we know what's going on. And now, Mr. Chairman, was there anything about the the attic, it was remaining unfinished or finished? Was there any condition or was that just testimony or do I just leave that?
I think it was just testimony. I didn't hear any conditions in there.
Thank you. And then was there something about the half of the stairs and the sidewalk being eliminated? Is that, Bill, that somebody is already on the plans or is that a condition that I have to memorialize?
On the plans, John.
On the plans, got it. Love that. And then okay. Do I need anything about the ribbon, parking space and expanding the driveway? So no parking variance is required? I don't think we need that, right?
Oh, like, I think they did request a variance for the construction of the driveway, the way it is.
Right, it's a dimensional width violation of the ordinance, so it's greater than 20 feet wide at the face of the garage, so we need a variance for that.
All right, so it's, what is it, driveway width?
Ted, is that correct? Driveway?
Yes.
So 20 feet is allowed and Rich, you're proposing? We'll come back to that. And then to our friend, Mr. Kramer suggesting, I think, Bill, the the pool gates have to comply with the Building and Construction Code requirements and you revise the plan so as to ensure that that fence around the corner of the garage is going to be taken care of in accordance with the regulations.
We will, we will comply. I don't know if Mr. Bianchi is the point man on that, but if he is, we'll look then.
Yeah, that's, and that's to surround the pool, Bill, four foot, it's got to have the self-closing gates, 54-inch high lock on it. That's, that's a building code required.
We will comply with the code.
And Bill, to your point, I think it's just a good thing to know that Ted is the point man for everything, so you can't So, Mr. Chairman, I think I had two last things or just, and we needed from Tom, the 24 or 26 feet. Do you have an answer, Tom, by any chance?
24 feet. So if you look at, yeah, if you look at the elevation of the that garage, it, there's a couple of ridges. There's a higher ridge and a slightly lower one. The height to the highest ridge will be 24 feet maximum. And not to delay or prolong anything, I would just say that what will probably happen, if we're going to a five-foot setback at the, what I would call the rear east side of the garage, in reality, we will probably make that 5.1 feet because from a building code standpoint, then that changes fire ratings and things like that. So I'll let Rich know that. It sounds immaterial, but from a, from a construction standpoint, it is is something.
So I will say a minimum of five feet.
Perfect.
And then I think the last thing was I was, was I missing out something for Rich?
32, 32 feet.
Okay, and what was that?
Width of the driveway.
Oh, driveway width, okay.
The face of the garage.
All right, driveway width, 20 feet allowed. And what was it, 32 feet proposed?
32.
Okay. All right, so, Mr. Chairman, a bit haphazard, but I think I got all of the conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Well done. Can I have a motion to approve the application as just summarized by Mr. Kennedy?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. A second? Oh, who was that?
Mike Malengo.
Thanks, Mike.
All right, Mr. Capoli.
No, I do not approve this application.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Malengo?
Yes.
Ms. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mr. Lisco?
No. Congratulations, your application was approved.
Thank you, board members.
Wish you the best of luck. All right, we're gonna move to executive session now. Good night, everybody.
Take care.
So, Mr. Chairman, but if we're gonna go into executive session, and again, for new board members, this is a new thing to go into executive session, at least for us on 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 the remote system, but New Jersey law allows us as a board to convene in executive session to discuss about, discuss certain things, mostly pending litigation or anticipated litigation. And they just, in a nutshell, we don't talk about car accident cases or things like that because that doesn't involve us. But suppose we had a case and we were settling and you said, hey, let's settle for $10,000, but you know, you can go up to $25,000. Obviously, you wouldn't run that that out in the public domain because the people you would know are, we were talking about trial strategy and things like that. So we can go into executive session. So, Mr. Chairman, with your consent, if we could have a motion to adopt the resolution to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing pending litigation matters, including the DeFranco litigation and the 110, 111 10th Avenue litigation, and minutes will be kept and made available to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. So, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay with you, we could have that motion?
Sure, I'll make that motion. Can we get a second? Thank you, Ms. Dietz.
All in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed?
I will note before we start, it looks like there's still some panelists under under the public.
Yes, I'm just give them a second to leave.
Okay. Eat it, we want to go home.
Ted's gotta get up early.
Yeah. You got it.
Never miss an inspection, right, Ted? I said you never miss an inspection.
Linda and Mark. Gotta go. Do you just restrict them, April, if 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 they weren't to leave or?
I made them leave.
Oh, there we go. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna pause the recording while we are in closed session.
Can tell, Holly, you never can tell.
So, April, what do we do now? Do we officially go back into the public to adjourn? April, I think you're on mute.
Yep, we're back on and we're recording.
Okay, so just for the record, Mr. Chairman, it's 9:50 PM. We are reconvening out of executive session. And for the record, in executive session, we discuss matters of pending litigation, the 111 10th Avenue litigation case and the DeFranco litigation case. And as required by law, minutes will be kept and made available for the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. So, Mr. Chairman, I turn it over to you.
All right, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting, please?
I'll make that.
Thank you. I saw several seconds. I'll give to Mr. Fitzgerald.
All in favor?
Hi.
Happy New Year.
Good night. Congratulations, new members.
Thank you.